Senior Programs Division under Parks and Rec. That program no longer exists. Seniors feel unwanted. They feel like they're being slept under the carpet. They feel like things are being taken away from them. And they're being all lumped into one pot. Especially through this new multi-generational concept that is in place. Seniors want to be around seniors. There are many programs for the youth. Catering to their needs. As the youth do, seniors have those same kinds of needs. They want to be with seniors, socialize with seniors, be immensely stimulated by the conversations that they have together. Council has long stated that they are concerned about the health of seniors by wanting mental stimulation, physical exercise, and socialization to keep seniors healthy and happy. Senior-specific programs offer that. And seniors are content and happy. With no senior-specific programming, seniors are in danger. Washoe County leads the nation in senior suicides. Without senior-specific programming, it is definitely could increase the statistic that is already bad. And what benefit would it be to a place that we all want to call home? I hope the council will look at creating something for seniors in the city of Reno that is specific for seniors, just as the city has for its youth. The youth and seniors have different needs. One is young, one is older. I hope that the council can issue a direction so that seniors know that their city cares about them. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. And with that, we have no additional public comment. And we will move on to item A4, approval of the agenda.
All right. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
If there are no amendments, I'll move to approve.
All right. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. At this time, I'm going to ask for item B, Consent Agenda. You think I'm right? All right, good. Consent Agenda. I'm going to start with you, Councilwoman Ebert. Anything you want to pull off?
No.
All right.
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
All right. Councilwoman Doer.
B1, just to do a shout out. And B4 and B5 because of the dollar amount.
B4 and B5?
Yeah, fire.
Okay. Did you see E1 or B1?
Me, B1.
Oh, B1, not E1?
No. B1 and B4, B5.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for your clarification. Councilwoman Taylor?
None, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Councilwoman Martinez?
Nothing at this time, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Breckus?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was going to pull B4 and B5 also.
Okay, thank you so much. May I get a motion to approve all other items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Clerk, for the record, can I ask, are we trying to use the software system? Okay, so then I would ask to be in a position to make a motion to approve.
All right. I have a motion?
We have no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion?
A second.
I have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's head over to item B1.
Yes, Madam Mayor. On B1, I just wanted to do a shout out. Zozo's Restaurant has been a landmark in Reno for many, many years. Their owners have done a phenomenal job. They've become pretty famous for serving fantastic food. I note that they're in for approval of a privileged business license for change of owner. And so I think that means that the owners are either have sold or in the process of selling. And I just wanted to take this moment to acknowledge their phenomenal contributions to our community. Thank you.
All right. Are you going to give me a motion?
A motion to approve.
All right, thank you so much. I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Item B4.
Madam Mayor, I think, I think we could probably take these...
Okay, we'll do 4 and 5 together.
I object to that. I have questions on each. And I, our time limits prevent us to be able to have adequate time, so I'd like to take them separately for thorough discussion of this program.
But we're going to hear them together. You can address both of them together, and then we'll give you enough time.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, I pulled...
Equally.
Okay. I pulled this off just because I think it's a phenomenal achievement. I believe that the city's had a grant pending, or this reimbursement pending for several years. And I thought it was worthy of a quick presentation and an acknowledgement to our staff about what they're working on and it looks like achieving here.
All right, Chief Cochran.
And that would be for both B4 and B5.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to give the floor to Chief Cochran. Go ahead.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Mayor. David Cochran, Reno Fire Department. Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Manager, and council members. So what we have before you today is first, an amendment to the interlocal agreement that we already entered into with the state under the Ground Emergency Medical Transport Program. This program allows us to be reimbursed basically for the overhead costs, the extra costs that we incur in providing services to Medicaid tran, or Medicaid patients. Like I said, the first contract is the amendment to the existing agreement because our expected reimbursement amount exceeds the amount identified in the contract. We anticipated around 1.3. It's now going to be 3.3 million. The contract had a limit of 1.7, so this allows us to recover the full amount of the reimbursement. The second item, B5, is simply the next contract. Since we were bringing the item before you, it was the same subject for both contracts. It needed to be renewed in June rather than wait four months and come back with the same item. We were just bringing both items together since they are on the same topic. You'll see the second contract has a substantially higher expected limitation because we expect our reimbursement to be substantially higher as well. We have recovered for FY20 approximately $650,000. Been reimbursed is a better term. We're expecting 3.3 million for FY21. And we have a claim for FY22 that is currently in the audit process. We do not have an estimate yet from the state on what the recovery amount will be. So we are waiting for that. We do expect that recovery to be paid out later this year. But, let me rephrase that, next fiscal year, which will be after July 1 of this year. So this calendar year, but next fiscal year. That is what we have going on, and I would be happy to entertain any questions. Thank you for pulling the item and for the kind words, Councilwoman Doer.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for presenting. I know that we discussed this several years ago, and it's taken quite a while for, I think, the reimbursement process to catch up. But I wanted to commend you and your staff for looking for alternate sources of funding. You know, we have been so tight on funding for fire in particular, police in particular. So doing this and being creative, I mean, this is a job, a service that we're providing already. And I understand that REMSIA cannot qualify for these reimbursements because they are not a government or a division of government. They're a nonprofit. And so I just, could you just speak to that for a moment?
Yes, absolutely. And you're exactly right. This has been pending for a while. As I said, the first claim is actually dating back to FY20. These are for services that we've been providing. It's worth noting that we have a mutual aid agreement with REMSIA for transport that's been in effect since 2016. So this is nothing new in terms of the service we're providing. But we've finally qualified for these reimbursements. And yes, the GEMT program is limited to governmental agencies. So a private ambulance service like REMSIA, like AMR in Southern Nevada cannot and will not qualify for this. But yet, and the last point, we do recognize that, you know, looking for alternative funding sources is a council priority, as is public safety. And this is a wonderful marriage of the two.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you. All right. Councilwoman Breckus, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I pulled this amendment, or the last item that was related on our last meeting, we had quite a bit of discussion. And, you know, I had asked that this come as a presented program, as its own standalone department item. Little did I know, we were going to have two more consented items and including a multi-year $20 million contract agreement the very next meeting. And I still have a lot of questions. I wish we had taken this as a department item with presentation, but it's good to see you, Chief, because it's been a while.
Thank you.
Since you've been available. Number one question on this is, prior to, when I started in 2012, the prior council did a series of layoffs to our fire department. 2015 or so, this council was asked to do layoffs too. So they're not that in the past. How do the collective bargaining agreements treat that if layoffs happen by the council and have to happen by the council for economic purposes, how do the paramedics blend in with the firefighter ranks?
Now, you're talking about a different, the single role medic program, which is...
Yes, this new...
Related but different than this.
Yeah, we have a new, new complement of staff, people in the fire department. We haven't had in 120 years of having a fire department. Say the city has to reduce force. I'm trying to understand, these are the questions I've been wanting to know about this program. How do the collective bargaining agreements deal with them? Okay? Is it a management decision to say, we're going to cut three paramedics and 12 firefighters? Or does the firefighter, the provision have some preference for firefighters that they, that the paramedics all go before all the firefighters regardless of seniority? If it's not with you, I see Mrs. Atkinson here, she's with the HR department, maybe she knows. But I really want to understand how this new complement of staff is integrated into the CBA.
Okay, I'm just reiterating that that is a different issue than the agenda item that's before us today.
I've been unable to get the agenda item before. And not only that, in November, when I asked to meet with you, that day you declined a meeting with me. And these are the sort of things that I wanted to ask you about. So you won't meet with me? I won't get a presentation? I'm going to ask these questions to help me make the decisions on this consent item. Thank you.
I understand. So the...
Did you want to interject? Come on up.
Jill Atkinson, interim Director of Human Resources for the record. So the distinction that happens here...
Wait, interim Director of Human Resources?
Correct.
Okay. See a lot of people coming, a lot of people going. Don't hear a lot.
So nobody's left. You received a memo that Ms. Santoyo is the interim Director of Parks and Rec while we search...
Oh, okay, okay. Did not know that. Yes, did not see that. Thank you.
So to help provide some clarity around your question, Councilmember Breckus, the single role paramedics are a distinct classification from our firefighters.
Sure.
So in the instance where there is a reduction in force, seniority is based upon length of service and classification. And so if the decision is made to reduce single role paramedics, that is the classification that would be impacted. Whereas if the decision is made to reduce force as it relates to firefighters, that is the classification that would be reduced. The two don't intermingle because they are distinct functionalities within the organization and don't require the same skill sets.
Sure. So management rights are preserved to decide among the resources. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Now, my next question about this program...
Okay, Councilwoman Breckus, I'm going to cut you off for just one minute.
Okay.
And I will come back to you. I just want to make sure if we have any other questions from council so we can give equal time. All right. Councilwoman Martinez, do you have any questions for Chief Cochran?
I don't. Thank you so much.
All right. Councilwoman Taylor? Nothing? Vice Mayor Reese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Cochran, thank you for the presentation. I get to meet with you frequently, and so I know that the care that you take with not only the policy directions that the department's taking, but also with the long-range planning. So I suppose the questions for me center around two things. One is the GEMT program just broadly. I think that since probably now two years, you have had a vision for this program. That vision perhaps was ahead of us because you had a knowledge that we didn't yet have. And you also saw something on the horizon which we did not see, which was the changes in the reimbursement rates from the federal government through this program. So thank you for being a leader and sort of having a vision to get us to where we are. You also, I think, at that time had a vision for the type of transport need that we had, which was a little unique in our organization. So we spent a lot of time talking about the way in which medical transport was different than our historical experience, how it interacted with our franchise agreement. And also, I think you had an excellent vision for the way in which our apparatus and our employees were being deployed in a way that was not strategic. Meaning, the way in which we were rolling sort of medical calls out with a whole fire crew, put that crew out on the roads, wear and tear on the vehicles, wear and tear on the roads, wear and tear on our people, where we might be in a better position to deploy more strategically with the smaller transport vehicles. So thank you for that. Because I think it sometimes is easy to overlook in the minutia of what we do that you are also running a department that has, you know, nearly 300 people in it, stations all across the city. So thank you for all of that. I suppose I would like to just understand broadly, the GEMT program, this reimbursement rate was significantly more than we anticipated. So why did that happen?
So thank you for the comments. And if I could add one item before I get to the GEMT question, because we had the conversation right a couple of years ago. And really, this is driven not by the GEMT and reimbursement. Certainly, that provides a funding, which is critical, because we need funding for everything we do. But it's really getting those resources, the right resource to the right call at the right time, reducing the wear and tear, not just on our equipment, but on our firefighters. And that's really the win here. And the fact that we found this funding source to support that win is what makes it all go forward. So the GEMT, if I could kind of broadly, and if you want to get into the weeds, I have Aaron White here, who can give you, you know, the nuts and bolts of the reimbursement calculation. But looking at it broadly, it's kind of intended to cover the overhead of, you know, what we incur as a cost regardless of how many patients that, how many Medicaid patients that we treat. Because they recognize, they being Medicaid, that the reimbursement rate for transport doesn't fully reimburse for all the costs that departments are incurring. The fact is that we've increased the number of transports that we're doing, which, you know, not coincidentally, increased the number of Medicaid transports. Our overhead, being a large department, you mentioned how large we are, translate, the higher dollar overhead, the higher dollar budget really, translates into that higher recovery rate. And so as you increase the transports, that's married to the overall budget. Let me restate that. The EMS budget, the overall EMS budget that we have, and that's how the transport rate is calculated.
All right, Chief. First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
This has been a few years, and you've worked really, really hard to get to this point.
Thank you.
So I'm thrilled, and I'm thrilled for you and the department, because I know that it means a lot. And maybe just sort of explain a little bit more in layman's terms of why this is so important? I mean, you just talked about the reimbursement, but like, can you explain a little bit more so that the general public can sort of understand? Because we use all these sort of fancy terms, GEMT and things like that. So can you just kind of tell us a little bit?
Yeah, I would love to. And I talked a little bit to the management team earlier this week about the same thing. You know, we have, our call volume continues to go up. We ran just under 50,000 calls this year. We have essentially the same amount of people. And to mitigate that, the impact of that call volume, what we need is, of course, more people, but more apparatus out on the street. And getting, like I said, the right apparatus to that call, do we need to send a million and a half dollar ladder truck with four firefighters to a call that really requires two paramedics on an ambulance? No, that's not the best use of resources. This program is going to allow us to achieve that best use of resources, that best practice. Getting the right resource to the call, not only does it get the right resource to the call, of course, now you have that truck available. So if there is a fire, there's a rescue, some sort of technical emergency, they're available to do the thing that they have the higher training for. It goes for the trucks and the engines.
Yeah, fantastic. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And I also appreciate your constant communication with me. Very, very appreciative.
Absolutely.
So I get everything I need and want you to know that I'm very grateful for all the hard work you put in. And like I said, this has been a long time coming. So great, great job. All right. Councilwoman Doer?
Madam Mayor? Yeah, thank you. I just had one follow-up, and that is, Chief, if you could explain, you've done a great job explaining everything, but to the point that you were just making last about the right person to respond, and then we're starting to hire standalone paramedics that are not firefighters. Could you just explain that and where we are in that process?
Yes, absolutely. So, and I don't think I mentioned that, so thank you for the question. The standalone medics will be staffing these two-person ambulances. They are non-suppression, meaning they're not firefighters. They will work side by side with the firefighters, be in the station with the firefighters, but they are not trained or nor will they respond as firefighters. The advantage there, again, is that you don't need the full breadth of training that the firefighters go through to respond appropriately to these calls. It also allows us to get these individuals on the street and working for the city quicker. Where we just closed the hiring process, we're going to be doing interviews in the coming weeks, probably next couple of weeks. We're going to onboard them late February, I think February 24 is the day that we're targeting. After an onboarding process, a training, and a familiarization process, they'll basically be up and running by the end of March. So with a three-week onboarding process roughly, we're going to get six new people out there delivering service, a needed service to the city. Whereas the firefighters, who we're also onboarding on February 24th, the next recruit class, they go through a 19-week academy. So in terms of the expeditious nature and the fiscal responsibility components of this, we're getting more resources into the system quicker, which helps us all.
Okay, so six people in three months is what I'm hearing, that are specifically paramedics. And are you going to deploy them sort of north, south, and central?
They will work a shift schedule like the firefighters, so there'll be two on each day initially. I anticipate that this is something we'll want to look at in the future in terms of the program that we may want to expand because of the reimbursement rate, providing its own funding, and the success, which I anticipate it will have. The initial deployment, they'll be stationed out of Station, Department of Redundancy Department. They'll be deployed out of Station 3, because that's a very busy district, and we want to take some of the workload off of Engine 3 and Truck 3. And then as we expand, we'll look at those, just what you proposed, kind of a north, south, east-west concept.
Could we lose her? Councilwoman?
Oh, I'm complete. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councilwoman Ebert? Nothing? Okay. I'm going to send it right back to Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have so many questions, just good conversation. So when we first embarked upon this first interlocal about 18 months ago, REMSIA sent a letter, they're the franchisee for ambulance transport, said, "Not crazy about it, but we're okay with it because we're not eligible for this reimbursement." Now we've really re-upped the dollars and reconfigured the years out. Is this making REMSIA obsolete? Or how much of a chunk of business will this 20 million take out of the business that they do?
The, let me just be clear, the 20 million is the allowable recovery. That's not necessarily the recovery that we will get. What we do with REMSIA is very collaborative. We've been meeting with them every month. And what we've done is provided, or hold out ourselves as a resource for them. So no, we'll not make them obsolete. In fact, we've been very clear, I know I've been clear in this room, and I've been very clear with REMSIA, our goal is not to take over transport in Reno or the Truckee Meadows or anything like that, but to provide that additional resource so that when REMSIA gets stretched thin, or they don't have the resources to respond, that we can pick up the slack there and provide that resource. And the example I always go back to, I think it was 2015 when it happened, we had Engine 4 stuck on a scene with a non-emergent patient, but REMSIA didn't have a resource available. And I think they were on scene for almost 40 minutes. They couldn't leave the patient, of course, but REMSIA did not have a resource available. So that prompted me to reach out to REMSIA and say, "Look, let us help in that situation." So that where it doesn't make fiscal sense necessarily for you, REMSIA to have an additional ambulance on the street, we can pick up that slack. We'll do the transport. Like I said, we're not trying to take over transport in the city, but we want to be a resource, a depth, or to provide that depth of resources for the city and really for the citizens.
Yeah. Okay, so, you know, you had a delay, but how do you know that was a Medicaid-eligible person? And how are you going to vet these people for Medicare eligibility? And are you going to leave the city of Reno proper? What if someone goes to Northern, you know, the hospital in Sparks? And what do you do with Medicare people who are tourists from California or somewhere?
So we never have and never will vet them based on the ability to pay. We treat everybody who has an emergency the same, and provide them the best service possible. And that was my point with Councilman Reese, is that this really was not driven by GEMT or the reimbursement. This was driven by the ability to provide service, to make that, to free up that engine so that they could be available to provide the transport to the citizens so that they're not, because, you know, while we have an engine on scene, there's a patient on scene too. We need to get that patient to the help they need.
Okay, so you're not going to be saying, oh, this is an older person, they're probably Medicare, you know, let's, let's let...
In no way, shape, or form would we vet a patient.
And you have policies for that? Okay. And then what about the Californians are swinging out of the corporate limits?
Anybody who calls for service in Reno gets full service of the Reno Fire Department.
Okay. And then, you know, dispatch has always been an issue. And I'm trying to understand how dispatch is going to work with this. And if we are giving up some of what I've heard for 10 years, our dispatch is the strongest. And, you know, we want REMSIA to fold into us. We carry the book of emergency responses all around the region. And how's dispatch integrating with this? Are you relying upon them to dispatch you, or are you dispatching them?
No, our dispatch is the strongest. I have no compunction saying that. I think they're the best dispatchers in the region. This really doesn't impact them. These are the same calls that we're going to regardless. We're just sending a different resource to these calls. And yes, we made transport, but the impact of a transport on dispatch is negligible.
Okay. And then, Madam Mayor, if I may, one more question? Okay, say...
We're three minutes.
Hold on.
Let me just check in with everyone else so everyone gets equal time, and then I'll get back to you. Okay, Councilwoman Martinez? Anything? You're good? Okay. Councilwoman Taylor? Vice Mayor Reese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to ask about the two-tier system for EMS. So as my understanding is that once the dispatch occurs, then they at the dispatch location decide which tier it falls into. Is that accurate?
Yes. And if it requires our response, Reno Fire, they send us, and then they'll send the caller to REMSIA. And then REMSIA will dispatch REMSIA units, not Reno Fire units.
Okay, so that makes some sense to me. Is that then determinative of the reimbursement rate, or it only happens once the transport has occurred?
No, the dispatch has no connection to the reimbursement rate, other than whatever cost factors are included as part of our EMS budget.
Okay, the second thing is in the single role paramedic program, who, do we already have folks who want to staff that type of an apparatus? Meaning, we have folks who are saying, hey, I'm interested in that? Or are we going to have to bring in a whole new sort of cohort of persons?
So as Director Atkinson described, we are hiring a new classification of person, that is, the single role medics. That's the non-suppression personnel that will be staffing this apparatus. Having said that, like anybody, any other employee, they have the ability to take vacation Having said that, like anybody, any other employee, they have the ability to take vacation or if they're all sick. So we will be backstopping that with our firefighters on an overtime basis.
Well, and so I wanted to ask, is the hope though somewhere in this program perhaps unsaid, but worth mentioning is that a person starts out in the single-role paramedic job? And this is the training ground for someone who might move into fire service? Meaning we're trying to reconceptualize the way in which we recruit people into the service of the city. And sometimes people don't see themselves immediately as a firefighter. So they start in a different route. Sometimes they work on Remsa and a lot of folks from Remsa then transition into fire service. It's a great thing, I think. Is this an opportunity for us as a city?
It absolutely is. You know, I haven't published it, but I make no bones about it. This is a recruiting tool. I'm looking forward to having these people working next to our firefighters, engaging in the system, integrating in the system. You know, it's almost like a long interview process. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity to enhance the service of the firefighters as well.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
All right, Councilwoman Doer.
I have nothing more. Thank you. I really appreciate all the answers to these discussion points. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ebert, you have any questions? I'll go to Councilwoman Breckus and then we'll come back to you. Sound good? Okay, Councilwoman Breckus, go ahead.
Yeah, I have three right now. So number one, along with what Mr. Reese says, say you have a paramedic who's two years in and they want to go become a firefighter. How does the collective bargaining agreement deal with that? Do they have to resign? Do we have a vacancy there? Do we pay for them to go to academy? I mean, how are we going to do that? Is that outlined in the CBA?
It's not a CBA question, it's a civil service question. So they would apply to the regular process to the, for the firefighter position. As a paramedic, they do have the ability, and that's not just our single-role medics, any paramedic who applies has the ability to get on a selectively certified list. So it gives them an advantage in terms of getting into the interview process. We, of course, would have the experience with them were they to make it through the regular civil service process, but this does not circumvent that process.
Would they have to resign as a paramedic to attend that period of the academy? How would you work with that? Do you have discretion?
Yes, they would. Because they're-
They would, okay.
They're an employee during the academy, so they're getting paid.
Yeah, because they can't, you can't do both. Okay, next one is, you know, it's always from the patient perspective, okay? Say I'm someone who gets transported, okay? And maybe I'm Medicare-eligible or so on. Do I get a bill from the city of Reno?
You do.
You do.
We have a billing service that we build the insurance or Medicaid as appropriate only. We don't seek anything beyond what-
Yeah, okay. So we're pretty far into this. And this is the first time I hear that our constituents are going to be getting bills from the city of Reno. And I think that's material. I hear from my constituents a whole lot, whether it's sewer bill, police alarm bills or so on. And this is part of my reason for wanting to flesh this out. What is the amount that someone could get a bill from the city of Reno for?
We have a, our billing rates on file with the state and I don't have the dollar figure off the top of my head, but I can provide that to you.
Okay.
This has been going on for a number of years. This is not, this is not a new thing.
I'd like to see a copy of the bill that's been sent out to understand, you know, what it looks like when my elderly Ward One, you know, constituent goes into AFib and, you know, they're being transported and how that kind of experience is out for them. I'm not that versed in Medicare, so I don't know. But you're only going to be sending it to people who are signed up for Medicare, correct?
No, we are, we provide the exact same service to whoever calls for service in the city of Reno. We don't vet them based on their ability to pay.
So everyone gets a bill?
Who, everybody who's transported.
Okay, so if I'm not Medicare, because I'm not, I'm not old enough, but I presume we're also doing Medicaid, right? Which is disabled, folks? Okay, so I'm not, I'm neither. I get a transport, I get a bill from the city of Reno?
Just like they would from Remsa.
So do I have to pay you?
We bill to the insurance. We don't seek reimbursement above what is covered by insurance, Medicaid, or Medicare.
Okay, so I'm a Ward One constituent, I'm transported, I get a bill from the city of Reno, and my insurance company will take care of that or presumably?
Well, we're not, that's a determination that our billing company will make. If they can't, then we don't pursue that.
What if I am a uninsured person?
I'm going to come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
You have three minutes. Councilwoman Ebert?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a question yet.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. I'm actually, City Manager, do you want to weigh in on that? I want everyone to understand because I think the way that it was framed where people might perceive that all of a sudden you're just now going to start to get a bill. So let's talk about that because I don't want there to be any misconceptions.
Sure, I think there are-
So do you clarify that for the record?
Two things that maybe the chief can speak to, just to make sure that we're completely clear on what's happening here. So number one, chief, for how long has Reno Fire transported in cases where Remsa doesn't have perhaps available or otherwise sufficient resources to make the transport of a patient in need of getting to a hospital?
So we've had a mutual aid agreement with Remsa dating back to 2016, I think September of 2016, so six-plus years that we've been doing this.
Okay, and so that program, of course, does authorize you to seek payment in the form of billing. And we have a third-party biller, but we don't, what I hear you saying is we don't balance bill. So if Medicaid or Medicare or an insurance company has some benefit that is available to pay the cost of transport, we collect it. Beyond that, we do not seek reimbursement for parties who are transported by Reno Fire.
That's exactly right. And if they don't have the ability to pay, we don't, that doesn't change the equation. We don't seek reimbursement.
And when did the organization enter into its first agreement to seek reimbursement through the G E M T program?
Fiscal year '20 was the first application that we submitted, so correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, I think it would be 2019? Or I'm sorry.
Aaron Wake, Admin Services Manager for the Fire Department. For clarification, we actually entered the agreement in 2022, but it was retroactive to FY '19. And we submitted our first one for FY '19 last year, or FY '20 last year.
And if I understand the specifics of the G E M T program correctly, rather than billing against the prescribed rate for Medicare/Medicaid insurance, it is a federal subsidy for the overhead that goes into providing that EMS service, which is, of course, different than what the market would bear in a billing scenario. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate that. All right, Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right, we have done three rounds, so you're going to make a motion. Madam Clerk, are you ready for a motion? All right, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve staff recommendation as to item B four.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion from-
I'll second.
Thank you so much. I have a motion from Councilwoman Reese. I have a second from Councilwoman Doer. All those in favor-
No, Madam Mayor, I've commented.
Hold on, go ahead. Wait, 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 one second. We're trying to figure out. So after that, do we have to put it here? Okay, oh, I see it up here. Okay, here we go. All right, I'm just trying to balance it out to make sure that everyone can see it up here, so hold on, Councilwoman Breckus. Where do we go to the vote? All right, so I have a motion and a second. I'm going to send it to Councilwoman Breckus for discussion. And I believe that is one minute.
Yeah. Okay, one minute, count it. I'll let her count it, go back and count the minute down because I certainly, you know, need to stay within timeframes that we put on these issues. So while she's doing that, I feel like I'm pulling teeth to understand this. I feel like I'm pulling teeth to let the public know what's going on. And I still have outstanding questions. I'm getting a little more information. I'm sure if you come in to amend this thing another time, put it on consent, I'll pull it again and maybe another half hour of questions will get us there. But the questions I have that still exist are, if I'm uninsured and I'm transported, you know, I know I'm not paying for the firefighter who's turning off my oven and, you know, throwing out my oil on the pan, but this other fireperson in a Reno firefighter uniform, as I see it, you know, is transporting me, is going to get me a bill. I'm not Medicare, I'm not insured, maybe I'm underinsured, I don't know. And then a third party will bill for the city of Reno and I'll never see collections. I'll never get, even if it's that little bill that says, "We're going to," we don't get a comment, it's only, you don't get an answer when we're doing that discussion with staff is done when it votes on the table. That is what I don't understand. Medical bills are scary. They're scary to everyone, they come in threatening. I don't understand that. I also don't understand how in the Medicare world, you know, which is congressional, you know, obligated and decisions at the state level, how secure this program is. I don't see it as a secure funding source. Thank you. So I'll be voting no.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion.
I said aye. Oh, it's not, it's not coming up for me.
Yeah, mine is not. Hold on. Does it take that long every time? Okay. Then, okay, then it goes away. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Madam Mayor, as to item B five, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilwoman Reese and a second from Councilwoman Doer. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Okay. Is it working? All right, good job.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Chief, and congratulations. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it right back to you and just kind of direct me when you need me to slow down so that we can make sure that we stay on top of the technology.
All right, Madam Mayor, we're moving on to our department item. So we're on item D one, so that's Dees and David, one, which is an approval of amendment of contract with Core Construction.
All right, at this time, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, we have no public comment registered for this item. Additionally, we did not receive any correspondence.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right, I'm going to send it to staff. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Justin George, Senior Civil Engineer for Public Works. I'm very excited to bring item D two, D one to you today. This is another major milestone for this monumental project. Once again, it's time to celebrate. Through the direction of this council and due to a lot of hard work from our team, I'm happy to present the final phase of construction for the Moana Springs Community Aquatics and Fitness Center. I have a short presentation to review the project's scope, schedule, budget, and highlight how this council's planning and strategy will provide an amazing aquatics and fitness center with the depth and variety to serve all of Reno's constituency. Let's begin with a dive off the starting blocks and a little warm-up on how we got to where we are today. The project delivery method we are using is construction manager at risk. With this method, we select a contractor based on their qualifications rather than on a low bid. Core Construction was selected as our construction manager at risk. Core was incorporated into our team of staff, architect, and civil engineering consultants early in the design project, design process. And Core's early involvement in this project has yielded many benefits. Some of those include providing valuable feedback to the design consultants, quality assurance, estimating, and construction scheduling recommendations. This feedback led us to splitting the project into two phases to keep the project on pace for a summer 2024 opening. Just seven months ago, we brought you Phase One of construction for a ward to Core. Well, they've been busy with the horizontal work to get the site ready and prepped for vertical construction, as you can see in this image here. The parking lot improvements are nearly complete, and the red line to the right side of this image shows where the utility corridor is located. The utilities will be brought on-site underground at this location. While this image is up, I wanted to touch on some of the sustainability efforts incorporated into this project. There's a grouping of mature trees that have been preserved in the park area on-site, and the plan is to include infrastructure to capitalize on electric vehicle charging stations, solar, and nearby geothermal opportunities. I would like to give a shout-out to Senator Cortez Masto and Senator Rosen for securing $800,000 of federal funding for a rooftop solar array, which will be installed under a separate contract. In the meantime, our team took a deep plunge to finalize the design of the building and pools. That design was completed in November and Core put that out to bid as the second and final phase of construction. The image on the slide is an aerial rendering of the finished site. Phase two includes the pools and building at the bottom of this rendering. By the way, that red line represents the roof of the building. We've gotten comments that this image is a little misleading as it kind of looks like we're building three outdoor pools. Rest assured, there are, there's a roof on the building and the two pools in the middle you see there are indoors. Just for reference, Phase One includes all the improvements beyond that, so construction of the parking lot, sidewalks, driveways, utilities, and landscaping. All right, so let's do a deep dive into the features of this exciting facility. This image is of the 50-meter pool and auditorium. This will be a regional draw for competition, fitness, and other uses. This pool will provide swimming in either long course or short course configuration. So the long course is the Olympic-length 50-meter and the short course is 25 yards long. Not only will this pool accommodate swimming, but also water polo and diving. There will be a pair of one-meter and three-meter diving boards. The other side of this facility is set up for fun, and it's packed full of features for multiple uses. Here you have three different kinds of pools and one body of water. There will be a resistance pool or lazy river seen on the right side of this image, a zero-depth entry section in the middle that includes lots of play splash features, and on the left is a multi-use pool section. This section of the pool will accommodate play, lessons, lap swimming, and one of my favorite features, a water slide. That's just outside of the frame of this image, though, so we weren't able to incorporate it in this slideshow. Sinking into the outdoor soaking pool, you'll find an atmosphere that creates an ambiance for relaxation away from the action of the competition pool or excitement of the recreation pool. So here's an update on the overall project's schedule. The silver and gold arrow shows where we are today on the timeline. As stated earlier, Core's recommendation was to split the project into two construction phases. The civil site design was complete in May of 2022. Core bid Phase One for the site work improvements in June and broke ground in August, right after the contract was awarded. This lined up perfectly with completion of the Phase Two architectural design for the building and pools in November of 2022. Core bid Phase Two in December and is ready to begin vertical construction as we thaw out from this cold and wet winter. So due to the hard work of our team, we're still on pace for that summer 2024 opening. So splitting the project into phases is kind of like swimming a medley relay race. Individual aspects of the design and contractor team are swimming down their respective lanes to touch the wall and send their teammates racing towards the finish line. This is a fun little graphic showing the project budget as our team completes the relay race. Each line of the budget pool indicates where monies have been budgeted. The budget categories on the left include design, construction, and soft costs. The swimmers in each lane depict how much has been allocated to date. The swimmers in each lane depict how much has been allocated to date. For the construction team, the total cost is $46,716,500. The Phase, Phase One leg was for $12 million, and the Phase Two leg, which is what we're here for today, is $34,652,021. The teams for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, along with public art, are still on their starting blocks with the delayed start until later this year or early next year when we get further in construction. So I wanted to take a little different approach with this next one, um, public art. So because public art has a little extra spring in their step, we're following the city's public art procurement process and are climbing the diving board ladder with the arts and culture team to create a vibrant public space by incorporating some nice artwork into this project. So flipping back to the finances, we've got three pools of funding for this project. $9 million was graciously pledged by the William N. Pennington Foundation. $27 million is coming from the general obligation bonds, and due to the fiscal responsibility of this council, the remaining $16 million is coming from cash on hand. For the final round of my presentation, I want to remind everybody that we have a really cool website, moannasprings.com, that is full of information to keep up to date with this project. It was launched in July and has received over 3,000 hits. What you can find on this website are some background information on the project, the neat renderings used in this presentation, monthly construction updates, and a live video stream to view the current construction activities on site. So I encourage everyone to visit moannasprings.com. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
All right. Good job. I thought you did great. Um, okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the body for questions. I'm gonna start with you, Councilwoman Breckus. None? Okay, Councilwoman Martino?
Councilwoman Taylor?
Great job. Thank you so much. I loved the little innuendos. I was listening.
I know, I felt like I was listening to sort of like an Airbnb ad. I loved it. It was very enticing. All right, Vice Mayor Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll be brief. First of all, the presentation was swim impressive, right? Core is obviously doing swimmingly at this facility, and you all are obviously using your noodle, so good job on all those things. Um, look, this is a big day, I think, for the city. Each time that this comes to council, I think it gives us the opportunity to briefly pause and, uh, just reflect about the importance of this particular pool as a touchstone not only to the community historically, but really about where we as a city are going. This is the first pool investment in my lifetime, and I think, as I've said before, I learned to swim at the Moana Pool. I had a really interesting conversation yesterday with Matt Bersina and the Washoe County School District about the ways in which our two CIP budgets really ought to be finding ways to work together, because I do think that pools, number one, this shouldn't be the last pool that we plan, it's the first. And I think it's important that we capture the opportunities where we can with our various agencies, whether it be the county or the City of Sparks, Washoe County, and us, because these are really community resources. And so it, it behooves us all just to really, I think, uh, look towards the future, right? And ultimately, I think that's what this, um, your reference to the Moana Springs website, they had an update, of course, in December, and I have tried to share those updates with constituents who have asked about it, because people were very excited about it. And again, I think part of this is due to the hard work that the staff has put in. Our finance team did an amazing job of identifying the various pools and buckets from which to finance the project, and so it just would be, I would be remiss, I think, if I didn't reflect on the, the great work that you and your team are doing, that our finance team has done. Um, and it really, I think, just speaks volumes about, you know, our Olympic-sized aspirations for a region. So I'm excited about today. I also noticed from the, um, uh, first photo that you put up, and I'm sure Councilmember Dewar would have more to say about this, but, um, you know, making sure that we are able to save those mature trees, I think is also a, a very wise choice and, and one that I think, uh, you know, our, our earth and our trees will be thankful to have happen. Our forester, of course, I assume, is going to join us, uh, in doing the groundbreaking and, and swimming in the pool. Do you know what kind of trunks he would wear? He would wear tree trunks. So thank you for the opportunity, Mr. George. Appreciate you.
Certainly you are drowning in lots of, no pun, you're drowning in lots of puns. All right, Councilwoman Dewar, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, um, and thanks, Councilmember Reese. Um, you did a great job. I will not repeat all the accolades and points that you made. I just really appreciate you making them for the record. Um, I too, though, wanted to point out the, uh, the fun presentation, uh, with both the anecdotes, the acronyms, and the puns. It was very fun. Um, I also wanted to compliment you about splitting the project and doing this, um, and I want to use the right term, construction manager at risk. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, and I think this is our first project where we're using this
Yes.
... style of construction. So we do the design, um, plan, build, if I got it right. But anyway, it's, it's a new way of doing business for us. It looks like it's proving out to be both effective and cost savings. I'm thrilled that we still are gonna be able to make our summer 2024 deadline. Um, I know it slipped a few months, but understand about the installation of the utilities, I think, is one of the challenges right now. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you all for doing a great job, and I can't, can't wait to give it a, give it a swim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Madam Mayor. All right, hold on, hold on one second. Councilwoman Ebert.
Uh, I have nothing.
Okay, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, and I didn't, I, this occurred to me, and now I'm the liaison to the Arts and Culture Commission, and you did mention the public art, so I thought maybe I'd get a little more informed. So you said the Arts and Culture Commission, um, and I need to go back and read that ordinance, or no, the, the staff is gonna come up with a suggestive concept for how to, um, deploy that not reserved $900,000, I think it was?
Yeah, correct. We had the $700,000 allocated for public art, and we're working with our Arts and Culture Team on how to best approach that. Um, what we're looking at right now is, is putting out a call to artists to get somebody involved. That way, we can, we can get them working on how to best provide art for this facility.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to conceptualize, you know, um, like a $700,000 sculpture in the parking lot, for example, versus 20 pieces around the wall. Like, who makes that call? Cause you need that kind of detail, I would presume, and the scope. And if you're not informed enough, let me know. I'll ask the manager to let me, um, maybe the Arts and Culture Commission has this as a topic. They, they didn't meet in January, so they should be meeting soon. Do, do you know who, how it gets narrowed down?
So this is something we're working internally with our
Okay.
... Culture Team on, and we've been, um, thinking about public art all along, where, where it fits in the facility. And one of the, the processes we're gonna be looking at is working with the artist to identify where public art's gonna go. It may not be one location, it may be several locations throughout the building or the site, where, where art's gonna be incorporated, but that's the process we're gonna go through. It's gonna have to be identified once we get further down that road.
Okay, well, here's my thought on that. And I have not wanted to be on the Arts and Culture Liaison, because I really, I don't want to be picking art myself in this role. We have to make decisions all, every, twice a month. You know, we make a lot of big decisions, and I'm gonna let someone else make decisions about art. But, um, having said that, I think that the concept of how it's allocated, you know, can't step over this body or the Arts and Culture Commission from, uh, you know, staff having the concepts to talking to artists who might be vendors. It needs to go to the council, and it needs to go to the Arts Commission, probably in reverse order, to the Arts Commission, here's how we're thinking, what's your input, and then back to the council on an item like this, and then start talking to arts who are going to be vendors. You know, they're not, you know, that's how I presume they are. So that's just my thought. Um, I'm new to this, I'm willing to be educated otherwise, and I will re-read the ordinance and, okay.
All right, we'll, we'll work with the Arts and Culture Manager.
Okay, okay, thanks, thanks.
And thank you.
And Madam Mayor.
Hold on one second. Um, Councilwoman Dewar, I'll come to you in one second. I think Councilwoman Breckus brings up a really good point. Um, this is just me personally, I'd like to see it spread throughout, so it's not just, it comes to the council with one big sculpture, right? That's just my feeling, but also, I think she makes a good point. Sometimes I think what happens at Arts and Culture is they're there, making decisions, they pick an artist, and also there's sort of this belief that, okay, this artist, you know, now believes they are the selected artist, it comes to council, and then we vote on it, and they can't really back it up. So before we even get to that point, it really does need to come to the council to have that discussion. I, I think that's really important, so I think Councilwoman Breckus makes, um, some good arguments for that, and just kind of giving you a little bit of, um, I think, where the direction we want to go, so that we have the ability to shape the process or just kind of, because I gotta be honest with you, there's a lot of times art comes before us and honestly, I have heartburn over it. So I don't want that to be the case, and then we can't back it up, because they've already made the decisions at Arts and Culture. So I think, um, Councilwoman Breckus makes a, you know, strong argument there. I also would like you to explain, and maybe it's the city manager, I don't know, but explain to the public, because, you know, whenever I look up there and I'm like, oh, that's a lot of money for art, right? But I want you to explain to the public why that is and the requirement. It's not that the council was like, hey, we need this much. So, I, you know, I just, I think there should be some clarity there, so if you can provide that, or the city manager, that would be fantastic.
Certainly, I can give the, the, how we got to the figures that we have, um, with all of our capital projects, anything involving the, the public funds, we have to take a chunk of that. 2% of a major capital project is set aside for incorporating public art into our facilities and throughout the city.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. And do you have any idea when that was incorporated?
I do not.
Okay, does anyone?
2002.
2002, okay. See, I knew you would know, Carrie. I love it. Um, so just for the public's knowledge, 2002, that was implemented as an ordinance to make sure that 2% of art in every project that we do at the City of Reno is implemented, correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman, or Vice Mayor Reese.
Well, I just was going to add on to your, uh, excellent analysis, simply that if you look around the community and you see art, uh, along the freeway or in places you might otherwise not anticipating seeing art, that's an element of the similar program, but at the state level, right? Lots of states, municipalities have art ordinances that require a certain provision of, or a certain percentage of public works projects to include a public art component to it, because we know that it beautifies the city, it makes it attractive to those of us who live here. Art has that intrinsic value, and that, I think, is why prior lawmakers and legislative bodies have included that type of art programming in all the things that we do. Um, you see it for us, for example, Councilmember Martinez and I were this morning on the Capital Project Search Art Subcommittee, and there's new art coming to the National Bowling Stadium. And again, um, it wasn't because Councilmember Martinez and I are, are huge artists and, you know, are Picasso's ourself, but it was because it is an element of the requirement for the projects that we bid and build. And so it's a very exciting thing for a city to have, and for our state to have made that commitment to public art. Even some art which I don't necessarily, you know, find attractive for me, I see its value in art being everywhere.
Thank you so much. Anything?
Uh, Madam Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councilwoman Dewar.
Yeah, thank you. I am, I too wanted to support Councilwoman Breckus's point, and the reason being, and I think it's been alluded to, is that this is $700,000. This is probably our biggest investment in art. Even with the Virginia Street Bridge, um, it was $18 million project, roughly. This is, you know, 46 million so far. Um, so it's, it's twice as big as the Virginia Street Bridge, and, um, so the largest investment probably in art that we've made. Uh, I'd like to see, uh, from the staff where we can place that art. It doesn't have to be on the Moana Pool site, could it be on the Moana Springs Park, which is bigger, includes the soccer fields, it includes baseball, um, and so on? Could it extend all the way to the fire station, uh, you know, which is adjacent to the, the complex, the sports complex? So, um, I too would like to see it start at the commission, the Arts and Culture Commission, come to the council with, with some concepts of what we would like to endorse before going to the specifics. So I just wanted to put a, um, level of support to that process, given that this would probably be our biggest investment of art to date. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Dewar. Anything, Councilwoman Ebert?
It's just kind of a general question. Is that 2% thing just for city projects, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so not like RTC or?
Well, I'll raise the question that RTC, um, we've had a lot of conversation with them, and I felt we should broaden our ordinance to be very specific, because it's kind of broad right now, and it, it doesn't identify, so people can make an argument that even though they're doing like a RTC project that is then handed over to the city, they're doing it on our behalf. I think they should follow, for example, our tree ordinance, our art ordinance, but, um, it's been sort of out, a, a question that's been outstanding.
Yeah, that was my question, because, you know, we have these art installations on the freeway and things like that, I was just curious how that tied together.
The state does, they also have a requirement. I don't know how much, but they have one too.
Okay, so yeah, sorry.
But different, but we are different.
Not totally tied to this, just.
No.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any more questions from council? Councilwoman Breckus?
Nope, I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready to receive one.
Okay, um, hold on one second. Madam Clerk, are you ready for a motion? All right, thank you so much. I'm gonna send it to you, Councilwoman Breckus, go right ahead.
Oh, I just lost. Um, it said move to approve the amendment, I think, was the, yeah, sorry. No, I think, I think it's simple. It said move to approve the amendment of the contract with Core and the rest of what's written there. Oh, no, mine's on. Oh. Move to approve the amendment of the contract with Core Construction.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Breckus. I have a second.
Second motion.
From Councilwoman Martinez.
Oh, my bad.
Oh, sorry.
It wasn't.
There we go, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yay! Good job! You didn't stress at all, did you?
No.
No, I thought you did great. Thank you so much. Congratulations, and, um, it was unanimous, so even better.
All right.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
All right, Madam Mayor, we're on item D2, which is a presentation from John Flansburgh.
Mr. Flansburgh, okay, this.
And Madam Mayor, for the record, we do have a public comment on this item.
I am gonna send it to you in one second. Okay, so, Mr. Flansburgh, you are gonna give us a presentation, but before we do that, I'm gonna go into public comment.
Our first commenter today is
Mr. Dan Morgan.
Dan Morgan, on behalf of the Builders Association.
All right, fantastic. Come on up. The floor is yours, sir.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Oh.
I want to begin my comments with thanking the city manager and Mr. Flansburgh and Ms. Garcia for their willingness to have these discussions and discuss a number of issues that we found in the proposed restructuring of sewer connection fees. First, I want to, I'm just gonna point out a few things just to bring them to your attention. I know John is gonna address a number of one of them in his comments, but first, we want to point out a couple of things. In his establishment of a baseline for the connection fees and the modeling and the proformas, it's, to our understanding and what we've been able to obtain from the study, was it's based on 2021 permits and absorption of single-family homes and, and multifamily. I can tell you with a, a significant degree of assurity that we will probably not see the market return in the single-family and multifamily markets, return to those levels for probably at least two or three years. We're projecting about a 50% reduction in permits in 2023 for our members. The projections also take into account and propose a 31 fixture unit threshold. At, as it stands today, nearly every single, single-family home development in the City of Reno, we surveyed 12 of them, and took a, a look and a review at the number of fixtures they had in their small square footage homes, and on average, they ranged between 36 and 40 fixtures. This would result in effectively an additional 2,865 to 5,157 additional fee over and above the initial connection fee, resulting in nearly a tripling of the sewer connection fee. We would also like to ask the, um, staff and council to take a look at the possibility of extending the connection fee payment until CFO as the utility and the service is not you, being used at that time. In addition, we would like to recommend and assist in the reactivation of regularly scheduled sewer enterprise fund meetings and the possibility of a creation of a sewer or a industry-type committee that helps to assist in the monitoring of the infrastructure development and construction, uh, as well as the connection fees and the revenue that is coming into the fund. We are not, and I want to make this very, very clear for the record, we are not opposed to increased sewer connection fees. What we would like the opportunity to do is extend the timeline on this about 30 days to work further with staff to develop and, and work through the modeling and the structure of the fees and the revenue, so that we ultimately solve what has been a 20-year problem that could potentially be a 30-year problem, so we can solve a combined 50-year problem once and for all, and not coming back and revising time and time again and opening up chapter, uh, 12.16 in the code. So I'll be happy to answer any other questions if anybody needs any additional detail. Again, I can't thank the city staff enough for their cooperation on this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Nice job, I really appreciate the feedback. Okay, Mr. Flansburgh, it's all you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the council. For the record, John Flansburgh, Regional Infrastructure Administrator. I do have a presentation today, so we'll get it going here quickly. Just want to say that my item is not near as flashy or splashy as Justin's. Cannonball, cannonball, right? I think we should have a dive competition, though, when we open the pools. All right, so today I want to be clear, I am not asking for any actions today on this item. This is, uh, an item that was coming forward. I want to cover a few items, um, as addressed in the previous meeting, uh, want to clarify some of our current business practices, and then present the items for future policy discussion. So there was an item, and this is, would fall under our, our practices, uh, the capital improvement project planning. And so I think that we get confused sometimes, capital, um, improvement plant, uh, planning or projects or programs, CIP, with our consumer price index, CPI, and those are, are different and not related, um, items. And so with this, I want to decouple that conversation. Uh, our process is staff and consultants are looking at that long-range, 20-year-type plan, and you'll notice in this graphic that 20 is kind of, kind of fuzzy out there, right? Um, because we're really looking at that long range, making our best determination. We get that through things like the facility plan at the, at the wastewater treatment plants, and then looking at our collection system. The thing, the items and, and projects that come in the 20-year plan are then synthesized down into a five-year plan, and that is, uh, where we work often on the five-year plan. Uh, we incorporate those projects for 20, 20 years, and we bring in some projects that come in that, that may not have been anticipated, uh, that have come to our attention since then. And from that, we come into what we, what would be our, our annual budget process, where we're looking out at the two-year, maybe a three-year, um, window, um, and we're looking for both, uh, funding, this is when we actually fund the projects. And from that, we come into what we what would be our our annual budget process, where we're looking out at the two-year, maybe a three-year window. And we're looking for both funding. This is when we actually fund the projects for construction and design. Not to be confused, though, with Consumer Price Index. And of course, we've been hearing a lot about inflation because of the historic high inflation. We've had fairly low conflation for years. But the 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 whole reason that we put a CPI, Consumer Price Index, is, one, it is a best practice for utility rate setting. We are just trying to maintain the base of what our funds were planned for, both our operations and for the capital projects coming forward. Yes, adjustments may go up or down. We've mostly seen up. There's been a few times we've seen something adjust slightly down. But what this really does, and the reason it's a best practice, is it helps avoid having to do a large one-time increase. So on our user fees, for instance, where we have incorporated the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, we brought that rate structure to the council in 2011. We have not, and the rate structure had four years where we had a four plus four, so an eight percent rate increase to get us by 2015 where we needed to be, beginning in 2015. And every year thereafter, we've had a CPI adjustment, and that's it. So we have not had to bring back to council on the user fee side a large increase based on the rates structure it went in in 2011. And so I just think that's important. That's why it's a best management practice. Now, one of the items that came up was the ability to adjust rates based on grants. And so, of course, I do want to say that the council has the ability by ordinance to adjust the rates at any time. Currently, there are some community grants formerly known as earmarks that the city of Reno will be will be will benefit from. There was a one million dollar award, and I think I mentioned this last time, for a septic-to-sewer conversion in Island Eight. There was a three million dollar community grant for Tumworth for a capital improvement program at Tumworth. Sparks was awarded that. But of course, as our partnership with Sparks and our community, we will actually see a, you know, a two million-plus benefit of that three million dollars. And again, that will help the one of the capital projects at Tumworth. Will that project be strictly a user fee project or strictly a connection fee? It'll actually be a combination, the one that we have looked at with expanding our electrical infrastructure. And finally, there was a three million dollar award to Tumwa for the Advanced Purified Water Facility. Well, of course, we in we are partners with Tumwa on that project, so we will also benefit there. So the overall benefit to the city of Reno is probably closer than five million of those of those grants. And they both have both user fee and connection fee applicability. On the screen here, I talk about the bipartisan infrastructure law. And we know that there is infrastructure dollars out there available. We also know that the majority of the money that's coming in through clean water and drinking water, funding to the state, is coming through the State Revolving Loan Fund. Those are loans. And so they will have to be paid back, just like any other loan. They do, they they will be low-interest loans. This is different than money that was directed to the Bureau of Reclamation, which was actually grants. And so we are seeking grant money for them for the Advanced Purified Water Project, for instance. So here are some policy items that we would plan to bring back to council. And I want to, I'm going to pause here for just a second before I dive into this one. We met with Dan, Kayla Garcia and I met with Dan Morgan last Friday, and we went through some of the items that they had. And one of the items that Dan brought up was, or that he, some of the ones that he brought up today were, you know, fixture unit counts. There was the just concerns about needing to take some time. We're going to have some code cleanup. And so although I'm talking, I'm going to start entering to items that would come back to council, one of the things I do think we would also need to bring back to council is some additional work on twelve sixteen within the code. And there are a few code cleanup items that we could do. One of those is with fixture units. I'm going to cover that at the end of my presentation here. But going forward, the Rizworth Allocation Program, one of the things that we're going to need to bring back to council is we were going to be, we will be requesting additional allocation of the program. Currently, council has approved two hundred and twenty-five thousand million gallons. That's represented in this graph of the hundred and ninety-five dark blue that is currently allocated, that has already been allocated to projects. There's thirty thousand gallons available that remaining. And so we are going to be asking for some of that two hundred and seventy-five thousand that still still remains within the flow shave project. So that'll be coming back to council. We would propose affordable housing subsidies, our current program. We don't have a cap on it. And so we need it to be fiscally constrained. And just as a backdrop, council has awarded two and a half million dollars in connection fee subsidies in this current fiscal year and four and a half million since this exception. Another item that we'll want to bring forward to council is the nineteen ninety-nine Washoe County Interlocal Agreement. Washoe County owns and operates the treatment plant, the South Trucking Meadows facility. When developed, when something is developed in that area, they will pay the Washoe County connection fee. City of Reno residents, per the agreement, that will that flow to Stumworth, they pay the city's sewer user fee, and then we pass that fee on to Washoe County. But we pass Washoe County's fee to them. And just to put that in perspective, Washoe County had an increase in their fee as of January first. Their fee is actually seventy-four cents per month higher than the Reno fee. So effectively, we are subsidizing. Now, when council first heard this item, it was approved, we had probably a thousand connections, maybe, probably in the hundreds, but not, but because it was way back in nineteen ninety-nine. Currently, we have like sixteen thousand plus. So it's a lot more connections down there, a lot, a lot more users. And so in this item and some of the, the reason we would want to bring this and have this discussion with you is if you're an owner and and you have a closed system, like a sewer system, the connection system that then flows to the plant, having a shared owner, the two owners may not have the same objective or goals. And so if I'm have the collection system and I've got a problem with water getting into my system and during storm events and increasing flows, I may, as the collection system owner, I may not have the same goal of trying to fix that that the plant would want to have so they don't see those extra flows coming into the plant. And so I just think there's some items there. And then, of course, it's the billing administration. We are creating, we are creating extra work for ourselves because we're collecting fees from for Washoe County that we pass through to them. Washoe County is collecting fees in our Tumworth Sewer Shed for us and billing and passing those through to us. And so we'd like to clean up some of those items. So those are just gives you, gives you an idea of what we're looking at. Our Tumworth ownership agreement. This was, the last time we amended this agreement was in nineteen ninety-six. And so we've been operating under under this agreement. Things generally are are fine, but there's a few things that we need to look at. One of the items currently is Sparks is in need of additional capacity. And so how we might be able to do that, we'll want to take a look. I do want to say that our capital improvement costs are shared by ownership. Reno's sixty-eight point six-three percent, Sparks thirty-one point three-seven. Our maintenance and operation costs, though, are by flow. And this is easier to happen at the Trucking Meadows Plant because there's a large interceptor pipe that takes the flow from Sparks into the plant and a large interceptor pipe that takes the flow from Reno into the plant. And we have flow meters on there, so we know how much flow is coming from each side. So we split those costs proportionally on a monthly basis. So if they're flowing forty percent and we're flowing sixty percent, we split those costs sixty-forty. So I want to be sure there is equity in how we do that. And then finally, septic-to-sewer programs, we've had some discussions on that. Staff is researching and and will look at best practices from other communities. We want to bring that back to council. We currently have about eleven hundred homes or so in between Islands Eight and Eighteen that we'd want to take a look at and see how best to do that. Island Eight, probably should have thrown a graphic up here where Island Eight is. Island Eight is down off of Audi, just to the northwest of Audi and Three Ninety-Five and Little Quadrant in the Montello area. And Island Eighteen, of course, is up off of West Plum Lane. And so it is primarily south and west of Plum Lane to McCarran. And then, just to address the question, I talked about the fixture units. I want to see if I can get the overhead. Zoom out a little bit, thank you. That should be good. So there was a question about fixture units and how we calculated those. We used to consider a standard house at twenty-six fixture units. That was your two-bathroom type home. Now, I could say three-bedroom, two-bathroom home, but the bedrooms doesn't, don't count fixture units. It's the bathrooms that do. And so in a, in your standard two-bathroom home, you're going to have a couple hand wash sinks in the bathroom. You're going to have two toilets. You're going to have two bathtub showers, bathtub or a shower or a combination. You're going to have a residential laundry. So that's eight fixture units, your dishwasher, your kitchen sink. That adds up to twenty-six. One of the items that we saw in the code, because fixture units traditionally have only gone toward commercial industrial, they actually charged four fixture units if you had a combination shower and bath. That doesn't make sense to me. You have one drain. You're not going to be running both the bathtub and the shower simultaneously, and and you still have that one drain. So that should be counted as two, and that's how we did it here. When we talked to Jeff and he had put his numbers together, Jeff Borchart last Friday with Dan Morgan, they were using four for that combination. That that isn't how we would count that. And we need to just bring that back and clear that, clean that up in the code. What we did was we actually increased that to thirty-one fixture units. And we kind of looked at it and said, well, a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home. And what would that look like? Well, you would end up with the additional toilets, additional hand wash sink. And so that would get you to thirty-one. Now, that could be used in different ways, some additional fixture unit types. If you had a whirlpool bath, for instance, that is four. A laundry sink comes in at four and a bar sink or wash-up sink is two. So there are some other items there. But we would, we would, I do agree with Dan. I think we could look at the code, and I think we could see how we might clean some of these up and just make it more clear as it relates to some of the residential uses, since those have been done in that manner in the past. So again, I would see that as additional item. We'll bring back to council. If we can go back to the presentation. But primarily, this does conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned in the beginning, I'm not looking necessarily for any direction or action, I should say, action today. I am looking for direction. And again, this item was requested at the last council meeting to bring back kind of a roadmap of how we see policies and things coming back to council in the future.
All right, at this time, I'm going to send it down to Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, and I'll disclose because Tumworth came up. My husband, Armando Ornelas Jr., is the Community Services Director for the city of Sparks, and under his chain of command is Tumworth at this, and and that's in his employment situation at this time. So I'll just disclose that. But I want to say, one, I thought your memo was good and your presentation was good. So we all know what's ahead of us, and I'm very excited about that. I don't want you to get too far ahead of us, though, on some of these issues for us to get broad policy direction because we're the policy body. And this is a fiscal issue, but it's also policy. And just on the issue of the of, you know, where do you get the break in connection fees? You know, housing is a priority here. You know, getting housing that our people can afford is here. And the builders, while they may have an issue, their issue is making money. And what makes the most money in this most recent development cycle is luxury. You know, multifamily aside, on single-family detached product, luxury. Well, what Reno residents need is not luxury because not everyone can afford luxury. So the policy of this body may be to put a higher hookup fee on luxury and maybe at some point, that can pencil better for non-luxury, you know? And luxury gets into, you know, how many fixtures do you have? So I think, I think there's arguments to be made in terms of how it's calculated. But I very much did appreciate the micro-units and the fixture count to advance other policy goals. And we cannot take this as a fiscal and engineering exercise alone. We need to conceptualize this as meeting the broader public need, which is really housing. And, you know, we haven't done a lot on housing lately, and we need to get there. So I see policy values in that. But I like everything else you brought forward. Island Eighteen, everything, you know, I think that's good. I just would like to have a little bit more juncture of each one as you, before you go negotiate with county counterparties, so you have some marching orders. And but, you know, yeah, it's huge. We have eleven hundred homes on Septic in West Plum Lane. They're islands because they were annexed, and they were county unincorporated annexed islands, and we had to annex. The the jump up to sixteen thousand in Stumworth and losing that money just to have everyone else carry that load is is beyond, you know, I just, I vented about it so many times here. The flow shave is getting concerning to me. And I really do understand, want to understand because that gets into the Tumworth deal. You know, because it's always, well, there, we've got extra capacity to send to Sparks. Well, we're sending some amount over there from Rizworth Sewer Shed area. So we're losing it, maybe it's not that much. But also, we want to meet our infill demands. We got Mr. Jacobs here saying he's going to build everything in the world, and I don't want to see us get short because we sold it to Sparks to then sell it out to Spanish Springs in the county, who they cut off, by the way. There's a lot to this that I think needs to get vetted before they start cutting deals with Sparks. And so, you know, great. But those are my thoughts from one body, you know, member who's been focused on this for a long time. But I think you're doing a good job moving us forward on this issue that is so important at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Councilwoman Breckus. All right, Councilwoman Martinez?
Yeah, I just did want to say I appreciate you coming up here and meeting with us individually to kind of go through the plans and what's happening. I'm just wondering if you can, because I don't have as much knowledge on the program, if you could talk to me a little bit about the septic-to-sewer program, what that entails and what it's about.
Thank you for that. So septic-to-sewer is, in different communities, they have their septic systems set up. And as communities have expanded, they, you, you don't want to have the septic necessarily, especially if it's higher density, because it can contaminate the groundwater table, for instance. And so typically, those those kind of programs are set up to possibly give some incentives to those who are on septic to hook into a sewer system. But often, because they're on septic now, the sewer system was never brought to them, like a development is today, where they, they extend the sewer out to there and then, and then people are hooked up as as they, when they purchase their homes, all that is in place. And so in this program, we would actually be the ones extending sewer out into a neighborhood, for instance. And a lot of times, those are set up in different methods. And I don't want to necessarily go into specific details, but someone's got to pay for that, right? So sometimes it's some sort of special assessment district is set up, and so that goes against each of the parcels. And then again, maybe there's some incentive of of waiving connection fees or something that goes into that. But but those are all policy, and we want to bring you kind of best practices back. But it's really about giving incentives for people to get off of septic to go to sewer. And I'm just going to, one more comment on that. Las Vegas currently has a program that they're doing to convert people from septic to sewer. Their main reason for doing that is actually water side. They want the, they don't want the the septic tanks or the water that's going in there now to go into the ground. They want to capture that, take it back to the plant, treat it, set it out to Lake Mead so they can bring it back for water. So that's, that's why it's septic-specific.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, John. I really feel part of my responsibility up here is to get the questions answered that people are asking. So I want to go over some of the things that Mr. Morgan's brought, Morgan brought to our attention. The first, I'll just go through them, and then maybe you can answer them quickly. I think you did in your presentation, but I want to make sure that we're responding directly to his concerns. The first one that I heard, and it probably was in the order that he gave, was a sewer enterprise committee to help with this. The second one was about the fixtures, and I think you addressed that. But if you could talk a little bit about the thirty-four to thirty-six and what the difference that looks like regarding the thirty-one that your team came up with and how you came up with that. Mr. Morgan also talked about a baseline established in twenty twenty-one. Now, I think I understand that timeline from two thousand and eleven until now and with the cost increase, but maybe we should touch on that just a little bit. And I think you did a great job on the grants. The payment at CFO, as I understand that, that's something that we're offering now. And I think code, the team might be looking on how we make that a little bit more clear and make applicants aware of that process. So if you need me to go back on that, I will. But I appreciate your help in answering those questions. questions. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm tracking four items. So we'll start out first, you mentioned, well, let's talk about the sewer enterprise itself. There's a sewer service commission in the code. That sewer service commission is primarily made up, though, of city manager representative, finance representative, community development, now development services representative, and public works, which now I assume would be like utility services director, perhaps. And that group gets together to look at any disputes that happen. So it's not really, we don't really have something set up similar to the building enterprise fund committee, the BFAC, but, but it was really set up there to really handle any disputes and to review, like, user rate changes and things like that. I've been with the city since 2005, 2009 in the management role, and I think I can count on one hand the number of times that commission has come together, because it really hasn't been that many disputes that would come forth. I do think that it's a good idea, and I specifically think we would definitely want to outreach and get a working group together for reviewing the code as it is today and get some, this cleanup to be put into place the way we'd want to see it go into place. So that, that was one item. Two, I think, let's do fixture units. They were using, Jeff Borchart was doing some of those analysis, and Jeff with Toll Brothers, and he was using four for that combo shower bath. If you had that and you had a three bathroom unit, that would take out four fixture units right off the bat. Again, I just want to bring back to the attention of the council, when, when we had this workshop in 2020, and I was working with Don Tetra at the time, and Builder Association, and the thing that came from the public was, well, why is it one single family rate regardless of size of home? And so we were really looking at that to say, well, what, why, you know, what would that look like differently? We were actually looking to propose maybe, like, cutoffs for different rates, depending on how many fixture units, but it really came out pretty clear. Well, if you, if you allow so many fixture units and then anything above that standard would then be extra, because people had different amenities, we thought that was the most fair and equitable way to do it, and...
I want to be respectful of other council members' time, so maybe we can answer the other two. Madam Mayor, is that okay? After, in our second round? Thank you, John.
So I'll just conclude with the two bedroom, or two, three bedroom, two bath home, 26 units. We went to a two and a half and called it 31. So we did increase that from the standard that had been set back in, like, the 80s.
All right. Vice Mayor Reese?
Thank you, and Madam Mayor, my comments will be brief. Number one, I do appreciate, Mr. Flansburgh, your willingness to continue to work with the stakeholders, because I want to make sure that folks understand that my desire to move forward today on the item is not foreclosing the possibility that you might continue to have some of those important conversations. So Mr. Morgan, I think, is a very thoughtful member of our community and represents a number of folks that are doing outstanding work. And so they, they want to make sure that their voice is heard and that they have a seat at the table. So to the extent that I can, I want to encourage you to continue those conversations, as you always historically have, and I think as Mr. Morgan has indicated that you have previously had. So for my part today, I didn't totally understand Mr. Morgan's desire to see it continued out for a period of time, because I don't think there's anything that we would make decisions on today that we could not continue to have those discussions about. I think you're right about the fixture count and how that went. I'm not sure I understood fully this concern or inquiry about the enterprise committee, because I'm not sure that that is the appropriate use of time, effort, and energy, in part because I think there are lots of ways that that opportunity happens naturally, right? Through the process, there's a number of different, we'll call it sub-meetings that go on, and so I'm not sure. I suppose for my part, I would give direction today about expediting the code cleanup, which I think is something that you're working on already. I think we already do the deferment of the payment of the connection fee to close, or close up, or certificate of occupancy, so I'm not sure we have to do anything there. I think that's already available to us. I suppose as it relates to a comment Councilmember Breckus made about the importance of housing, of course, I believe that's true, and certainly why we've had to take a number of difficult votes on this dais about housing. And certainly, there's a sort of, also an opportunity for, with regard to affordable housing, we've made some commitments as a body that you've mentioned here before, and I think are ultimately another question we're going to have to answer in this process as we continue to make either, it's mostly been deferrals, but a couple of times there have been waivers out of the fund. I suppose, I think too, that it's important that as we, every time we approach our budget cycle, that we are having these kind of reviews, right? So that a review of this as a separate element of our budget each quarter or in Q1 of the years in which we are continuing to evaluate our budget is also an important policy direction, I think that you should take from this conversation, because that then takes up all the arguments that are related to changes in the economy, changes in the way that the building permits are going out or not, takes the pulse of the market out of it, and it allows us to have those conversations. I'll also say, for the benefit of my colleagues, I do think that the way that the memo has analyzed the different ways that you could budget forecast, I suppose, on the CIP side is an important part. And again, I leave that to your more experienced and learned direction, but I do think it behooves us at budget time to be inquiring of those things and making sure that we understand them. So outstanding presentation, hard to make sewer as fun as pools, but you're doing your darn good job.
All right. Councilwoman Doerr?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple items. I think a lot has already been covered, so I wanted to ask or get on the record that there's more than 1,000 septic systems. I think it was mentioned over 1,000 just in Island 18, which is Plum Lane, but I know there's other parts of town, too, that have septic systems. And I think when I last talked to Mr. Flansburgh, I thought he said around 4,000, but maybe it was 2,000, but anyway, it's more than 1,000. And so I didn't hear in the presentation, but I might have just missed it, any mention of this program, AB 54. I was actually instrumental with Rosemary Minard over at the county in getting this bill passed, which would provide a loan program to allow residents to, to change from septic systems to sewer systems and be able to pay that over 40 years. The county has the responsibility for managing the program, so I really think we need to have those conversations. That program was passed in 2009, and to my knowledge, nobody in the city of Reno has been able to access that program. So I think it's been around over 10 years. We have an opportunity to push forward and get more people converted, and I think we should take advantage of it. So when you come back, Mr. Flansburgh, I'm hoping to hear a little bit more about that. The second thing is the fixture count. I just wanted to say, and I don't know if this is true, but many, many homes have been built in South Reno in the last two decades, and I don't know that they are three bedroom, two and a half bath. They might be three bedroom, three bath. And I wondered if you have a breakdown, John, of, you know, how many homes you estimate are in each category, whether it's the micro unit, which I fully applaud. I have many people that live in smaller homes, or there's just two people, and I don't think it matters whether there's two people, but 31 fixtures, that would still be charged as a 31 fixture. But anyway, I guess one thing I am leaning towards is increasing the number of fixtures, because I think as a standard amenity in South Reno, they've either included a sink at the laundry room or some other thing, maybe it's a second sink in the kitchen. I just don't want to penalize, if this is the standard, not the luxury, as Councilwoman Breckus talked about, but more of the standard, then I think we should recognize that. So do you have a breakdown on how many, like, percent might fit in each of these categories?
To the question, so John Flansburgh, the, I do not have a breakdown of how many homes would fit into each of those categories. All I have is looking at, the standard that has been in place was the two bedroom, and we increased it to two and a, I mean bathroom, and we increased it to two and a half bathroom with those fixture units. And I, I am not aware of how that fits into homes that are being built per se, other than looking at some of the floor plans that are out there.
Yeah.
So, so I don't, I'm not sure how that would play in. Again, we were looking at kind of what that standard is. If you think the standard should be increased, we certainly could look at that as well.
Well, maybe your goal is to reach something like a bell curve, where the micro units are 10% or 20% or 15% or whatever the number is, the luxury units are similarly 10% or 20%, and the vast majority are in the middle. And I just want to try to hit that number if we can. And I'm not saying it should be a bell curve, maybe it's a third, a third, a third. I don't really know, but I suspect that there's probably, if it's only two and a half bath and a kitchen, that we may push, like, 40% into that higher category. So I just want to be careful. I'm not, I'm not saying that's a terrible policy decision, but I'd like to have some sense of the numbers before, before we do the final thing.
Okay. Councilwoman Breckus, or Doerr, I'm going to cut you off.
Yep, thanks.
Sending it to Councilwoman Ebert. Any questions?
No, not at this time.
No? Okay, I'm going to send it right back to Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the only question that we needed to talk about, we did. Congratulations. Thanks, John. So real quick, I guess, I have a question. Are we talking between 31 and 36 fixtures? Do you think in your conversations, you have the ability to work with your team to get to a place that everybody can agree upon, between 31 and 36?
Yeah, I do. I think we, I think we can have that conversation with the builders, you know, or those who are working on this, talk about that with our staff as we look at the cleanup of 1216. Like I said, we already found that one that didn't make sense, right? The shower bath combo is four, but a shower is two and a bath is two, so it doesn't make sense that you had charged the combo as a four, it should be a two.
Okay. And I would imagine that, again, you guys can have those conversations and get to it.
And my numbers include that, and Jeff's numbers did not. They included four, so that would, that would have added significant number of fixture units. So, so we can both work together to come up with the common ground.
Perfect. Thank you, John.
Madam Mayor. But I think if they're going to have direction, they also need to meet with people who are concerned about housing affordability, too, because, you know, the single family detached product is putting a lot of burden on us in these outlying areas, you know, in terms of other factors. And if we can incentivize more infill, which is attached, that's still single family, correct? Condo is still, comes under the single family, it doesn't come under the multifamily. But I've got a four-story...
I believe that's correct.
Yeah. So we have to, we have to know, you know, there may be a geographic sweet spot where, you know, the under 31 fixtures, they are absolutely being built where we have police patrols and fire service available, and, you know, the other ones are being carved up on hillsides, on streets where, you know, we haven't plowed before. So we really need to go back to the master plan and think about some of these bigger policy objectives that we laid the groundwork for in 2017. One last thing about the sewers to septic program, when that comes back, is I'm not entirely sure that Island 8, it's been a while since I've looked on it, isn't on the path to more density in terms of, you know, very large lots that are going to be, you know, very much developed, you know, probably as multifamily, because we did a fair amount of master plan amendments over there. In there, the market should be bringing the sewer in. In Island 18, there's, you know, certainly with us not having an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, there is not a lot of development potential. So we need to look at those, I think, differently, and it starts with the maps and the development pressures in each, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And, and just to back up on, Councilmember Doerr had mentioned, I mentioned that there's over 1,100 homes on septic in Island 8 and Island 18, so...
Yeah, and I just want to say to everyone, two properties off of West Plum Lane this last summer, a 50-year-old house was about to get red-tagged because they had a bubbling leach field coming up through their yard, odor all through the neighborhood. It was in the spring when I got involved, and the, the cost was, you know, and other people would have gotten a free ride if they were made to extend that, the cost was, you know, $200,000, and they had no leach field option. I've been talking about this for 10 years, there are places with no leach field option, and this was a flat house on a quarter acre, they were going to get red-tagged by the Health Department. That's how bad this situation is in some areas. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions, Councilwoman?
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead. Councilwoman Doerr?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, thank you for that. So John, you said 1,100 in the two areas. And I guess my question is just, are, or missed the part, are you coming back with a specific program on how to enhance the conversion process?
Yes, I, so to the question, Councilmember Doerr, we will come back, we'll present different best practices, what other areas are doing, we'll present some options, and, and, you know, this will be a collaborative project or between us as we develop what this program should look like, as well as what those fiscal impacts would be.
Okay, great. I just, and you'll reach out to the county, I assume, as part of this. You already mentioned that.
We have, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
All right. Any further questions? There's none. Do you want to add anything? No?
I'm good, thank you.
Let me ask, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment? No? Okay. So with that being said, you are not looking for anything other than some clarity of...
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, right? But are we clear on some of the things that we were going to add in there? Fixer numbers, time of CFO?
Yes.
Everything?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll reach out and try to bring that back as quickly as we can on the, on that item. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Morgan, did you want to put in a public comment?
We did public comment at the beginning of the item, but if you'd like to...
All right. So I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared. Oh, you've made a motion, okay.
No, no, you go ahead and make a motion. I'm just trying to give the clerk enough time.
Yep, I'm prepared to make a motion when the clerk so directs me. I move to accept the report with the recommendations and materials identified by the body to Mr. Flansburgh.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice Mayor...
Second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Doerr. Any discussions? If there are none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Oops. Sorry.
Okay. All right. Good job, we did it. We're going to get this down. We are going to get this down, I promise. It might take a few meetings, but we're going to get there.
Okay. All right. So we're moving on to item D3. We do need to open the redevelopment agency board in order to open that item, so if you're ready, Madam Mayor, we'll go ahead and open redevelopment agency.
Okay, so at this time, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it to you to call the roll.
Okay. Councilmember Breckus, absent at this time. Councilmember Doerr?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Ebert?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Shivi?
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the redevelopment agency board.
Okay.
Item L2 is opening public comment. We have none registered, so I'll go ahead and close that. Item three is approval of the agenda.
All right. Make it a motion. I have a motion from Vice Mayor Reese. Sorry, we moved a little fast on that one for you, sorry. I believe a second from Councilwoman Taylor.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, back at you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We're moving on to item L4, approval of the minutes for December 14th, 2022.
All right, we're preparing for a motion. I'm going to send it to Vice Mayor Reese.
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Councilwoman Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Two in a row. We're doing good. All right.
All right. So now we're going to go ahead and open item L51 in addition to D3.
All right. Where is that?
Brian McCardle?
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Okay, it was what, L?
L51 and D3.
L51, okay, perfect. Just to check back in with you, any public comment on this item?
We have none registered, Madam Mayor.
All right, and I am super excited. We have Brian McArdle. I believe this is your first time at the dais. No, no stress.
It is. First and many, I'm sure.
You've done this so many times. Not in this room, but you've done it many times for EDON. But we're excited to have you.
Thank you.
And we're excited for your presentation, because I know this is something you're incredibly passionate about, and that's the very reason that the city brought you on. So excited to see what your presentation looks like.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me. Brian McArdle, City Revitalization Manager. And I'm here today, and board members as well, for the redevelopment agency. I'm here today to discuss potential direction and authorization for two properties on West 4th Street that are associated with the Retract Project. Taking a quick trip down memory lane, for those who remember the Retract Project, this was when we put the trench through downtown Reno. And part of that was a transfer from the Union Pacific Railroad with the city of Reno to allow for building of the trench and also temporary rail lines. And the property we're talking about in the upper right-hand corner, you can maybe see, is the Nevada Dance Academy, and that's the one we're discussing. But after the project was done, the properties were reparsled and conveyed jointly to the city of Reno and the redevelopment agency, which is why we had to open both items today. And it is not within a redevelopment area specifically. Part of these properties were involved with a revenue bond. I've confirmed those revenue bonds have been paid off, and so we can now dispose of the properties as needed. And over the past few years, the city has sold off properties in this area. The Retract Project goes all the way to the spaghetti bowl, but we're just focusing on this area just west of Keystone. I believe the first property to be sold off was the Maverick Gas Station, right in the corner of 4th Street and Keystone, right there. And other parcels have been sold off just along Chisholm Street, just north of the Elma State. And the ones we're talking about specifically here today are the two yellow parcels, right at the tail end there. Currently Eagle Window and Doors and formerly the Nevada Dance Academy are on these parcels. Just a street view of what is going on here. That is the Eagle Window and Doors. On the backside is the Nevada, former Nevada Dance Academy, and the parking lot that serves that Dance Academy. We received a letter of interest from the current leaseholder, who owns all the improvements and the buildings on that property. They'd like to put a new roof and some other improvements on there and requested that they purchase the property so that they can retain ownership long-term. Just for their review of the properties right there. I don't think there's anything much more to say. I will say that, you know, they're proposing the no changes of use. And if there's any easements that need to be had, we'll retain those as we negotiate with them going forward.
I think that was one of the questions. And then, how does that work? I guess, do we get a, what do we call it, a, no, or, no? Estimate?
So, yeah, so what we're asking for today is to start that process. We actually need to go get appraisals for the property.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, and we need to start negotiating with the current leaseholder on what that will look like. And then we'll bring that, you know, purchase-sale agreement offering back to this council for final approval.
Okay, so right now, you just need approval to move forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I just want to make it clear to everyone at this time, we are not selling this property right now. We're just saying we want to move forward. Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. I'd like to ask for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to allow staff to proceed with negotiations with JM Ranches and order appraisals on the property.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilwoman Reese, a second. Hold on, I'll send it to you in a minute. A second from Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes, I have discussion, one quick discussion.
We're going to go right now. Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was in the back, and I didn't hear you call for, there might be a delay over there. I didn't hear you ask for questions of the body, from staff. And the issue I have, and I want to explore, and the Eagle Windows person and I have had a lot of contact over the years, and I don't know if he's the one who made the proposal, but, so I know how that property is operated, the Dance Academy, I've been in there when it was the Dance Academy. I don't know how it's operated now. But just two meetings ago, or last meeting, I think it was, we continue to plow money into this subsidized housing project, which has struggled on this corridor. And it's very alternative. We put general fund money. I've always been skeptical of that project. They came in on some, they're putting housing on that side of the railroad tracks, you know, and maybe in this era, you know, housing stress, housing can go anywhere in Reno. I kind of think that, but I don't want to, you know, work against ourselves. And so, can you show from the map where that subsidized housing project is? I think it's called the empowerment zone, or?
It is the one right next to the Maverick Gas Station. It was sold in 2021 to Truckee Meadows Housing Solutions.
Okay, so, so we're going to be a couple of properties over. The zoning has changed a lot over the years. What are the, what industrial uses are allowed on those two properties? Right now, I would classify them as a, well, one sounds vacant, maybe outdoor trailer rentals, right? Is that what you're?
Those are the properties in green. I believe there's Reno Gas and a trailer rental on those locations.
Yeah, but no, the ones in question, what do they have going on there?
Those are Eagle Window and Door and the former Reno Dance Academy.
So a vacant structure.
I don't know if it's one structure, but the former Dance Academy was on the backside of the structure.
You can always, for future reference, you can always pull active business licenses for properties and do a rundown that way, because that's what it is. You know, if someone's in there doing something and don't have a business license, they're not doing something, right? But my concern is, because in between, we have what, a gas propane place?
Reno Gas Station and Trailer Sales.
Okay, now Reno Gas Station, you know, I don't know what they do there. It's not just a regular gas station. I think it's maybe, it's commercial fuel. Okay, so residential next to commercial fuel. Let's think about that. And, you know, it's a question. So what I'm proposing is that the council possibly think about restricting some heavy industrial uses if they are allowed by the zoning on these parcels, right? Which is not inconsistent with having a dance school and essentially a showroom contractor's yard is how I would classify Eagle Window. Because we're going to have, I don't know, Truckee Meadows Housing Resources is going to have 30 residents there, I think, or at least, did you get a number on what their proposal was?
No.
No.
Lori, why don't you come on up and, yeah, I guess we're a little confused because this wasn't the conversation, and then we went into housing. And I think you're losing people, Councilwoman Breckus, of not tying it back around of like, why we're here. So let's kind of get back to that.
I'm sorry if you're not following. Go ahead.
Lori Miles, property agent for the city of Reno. The Truckee Meadows Housing Solutions property is very tiny and can accommodate up to nine tiny homes.
Okay, so there'll be nine tiny homes there, and then we have properties, two properties in between, right?
Those are industrial, the Reno Gas and the open trailer cells.
Those are the ones?
In green, 12 and 18.
Okay, so, you know, we really need to decide at this point, are we going non-industrial on this corridor? Or are we going industrial? Because we've already made the decision to put nine tiny homes there. And if we are going non-industrial, when we sell these properties, we want to put covenants on them to make sure, or rezone them, to make sure that they're not going to have heavy industrial uses. That's a consideration that I've had for a lot of years here.
Okay, wait, I'm confused. So are you saying that possibly we would change the zoning based on?
We are not proposing any zone changes today, nor is the current leaseholder. So the existing use would stay the same. At a later date, if they want to change the use, they would come back for zoning change.
Okay. Well, no, no, you don't understand, is we can put covenants when we sell property and say not to be used industrial. So that's guidance that we would give out to the appraisals. It might take off some value on the property, but it's a heck of a lot better than Eagle Window selling it next week to the propane guy who wants to expand a propane use. And then we have a tank farm next to nine tiny homes. Are you following along that? So that's where I'm going.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks for kind of bringing that back around. Because I think we're all confused of, like, why is the housing component coming in here? And so that does make sense. What does that look like, Brian? Do you know?
The housing component?
Well, no, I think, you know, she makes a good point in the sense, like, we end up selling it to him, and then he sells it to another person, and then they're using it for, you know, a whole other intention.
If it conforms with that zoning use, then they would be allowed unless we write specifically in the purchase of sale that it cannot be used for a certain use.
So when you come back for that purchase of sale, can you be a little bit more specific? Or, I don't know who's here, you want to speak a little bit about where you're trying to go? Thanks so much. And for the record?
Josh Tyrion, I represent and run JM Ranches. You guys have seen me up here before. I'm the guy buying old warehouses on 4th Street, so.
Oh, that's right, okay, I remember.
Yes, recently, the Reno Brewing Building, and we petitioned to give me that.
I think the alley.
The alley, yes.
Yeah, how's that going?
We're making progress.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so we're getting there pretty close. But our intent right now is just to restore that warehouse. Eagle Window and Door is interested in staying in the building. We're not looking to do anything other than to secure our investment in the building. So as it was mentioned, you know, there are components of the building that are dilapidated, you know, and need replacement.
Yeah.
The roof is a $180,000 investment. I don't have any immediate plans to do anything other than to clean the building up and restore it.
And keep it rented in those uses?
That's correct, yeah. The lot right now, I think there are some easements there that inhibit any sort of major development there. And our plan is just to continue to use it as is.
Really? So the intent is you come back and stay within the same use?
Yes.
Okay.
For the near term, and we don't have any alternative plans other than to justify our investment in the structure, knowing that we're not putting good money after, you know, something that's going to be torn down, so.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. So I understand now. So we have a motion and a second. We have a discussion from Councilwoman Breckus.
Madam Mayor, I have a moment of discussion as well.
Go right ahead.
Discussion, too.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, some of these things are, I think, perhaps not what the agenda item was intended to discuss. So I want to just refocus and think about our disposal policy as a city. I think I've been involved in the sale of all of the parcels in blue on the map. And we have a disposal policy that says that existing users and adjoining users essentially have some preference in our policy directions to make sure that we utilize the spaces to the best of our ability. These remnant parcels are incredibly complex and difficult, especially given the way we obtain them through the retrack process. And also, the historical uses have been largely, we'll call them light industrial. I mean, I think the existing businesses on Parcels 12 and 18 have been there, I think, as long as I've been alive. And so I don't think we should be, you know, changing their use around them. Those businesses have been existing and have existed along this historic highway for many years. That the Nevada Youth Empowerment Project has decided that they can make a go of something there on their small parcel, I think, is something that they made a decision about. And I suppose ultimately, we invested some effort in that, too. And so what I want to be able to make sure I'm clear about is, and do support, is that this particular existing business owner and their, however it's structured, as a buy-sell with another party or some financial arrangement, we have a preference to sell those parcels to those existing users. And we'll go through the process of doing the appraisals as we are required to do by law. And so I just think there's not a lot here other than to say the city of Reno should not be in the habit of owning property. I think when it does have the ability to dispose of that property, that is a benefit to us as a city because we don't need to be property owners and landlords in that regard. And so I think it's a very easy decision to be able to move forward with this today without the conditions or obligations that I think the member from Ward 1 is really speaking to. I'll also say, too, that for my part, I don't believe that the sale proceeds should just be sucked up back into the general fund. I would rather that the sale proceeds, when we do get to that moment where we sell them, go into our revitalization efforts. And Mr. McArdle, we brought you on in the hopes that you would be able to supercharge an area of this, you know, this city's future. But we haven't really given you the resources to do it. And I think Mr. Edelstein is also a part of that sort of nuanced programming. And so for me, and I am sort of signaling my hand perhaps early, but it just seems to me that when we sell a piece of property in the redevelopment district, we should be putting that back into the efforts that you're going to go out and undertake. And so that will be my ultimate recommendation, perhaps not in today's motion, because I think it's unnecessary to the motion that I've made. But when it comes back, please know that, as my colleagues will understand, that will be my interest, is seeing those monies kept within some broader pool of money, which would allow for the redevelopment and revitalization efforts that you are undertaking as a department.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, Councilwoman Reese covered what I was thinking of, just hoping to see what you guys can come up with as far as innovative ideas with what the sale might look like. And appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'm not going to support, and the disposal policy is one that I brought to this body when I came on. And giving preference to adjoiners was really a value that I brought forward. I've written disposal policies and worked with those in other cities, and I saw a real need because we had all these retract properties. But when you're a city and you're selling property, you're not just disposing of economic value. You know, you're not just doing transaction work. You're trying to advance policy. And, you know, without having a clear interpretation in this staff report about, is this industrial-use property? You can't just go off what the buyer wants to say. We've seen people buy property from us on this sort of deal and immediately flip it. You know, which, you know, I don't know he'll do it, but, you know, we need to look if we're preserving industrial uses on this corridor or not. And I didn't see this in the staff report. I don't see any zoning analysis. It may be a moot point. There may not be an ability to do another tank farm. But there may be, and we've got nine tiny homes going up. So it's a little deficient right now. I would have liked to seen the direction to be, write the appraisals, pulling out the hardest of the industrial uses that would be deemed by our community development staff incompatible to residential adjacency. I know they're separated, but we know the other ones are going to sell at some point. That's how I would have written this motion, but right now, we're just selling it as is, and?
No, no, we're not. We're just.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor. There's a broader discussion, Councilwoman Breckus, to come back to sell the parcel. So we're not at that stage yet. So we will get there, and you'll be able to have conversation then. But for now, this is just very generalized. And we want to stick to that, because I think that's where we've gotten off track. Councilwoman Doer, make it brief. I'm so sorry. You have a minute? Because we have a motion on the floor. Councilwoman Doer? Did I lose her? Is she muted?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can now. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted, since we're having a bit of a policy conversation, I just wanted to support both of my colleagues. I think reinvesting the money in the redevelopment is a really good idea. And to the other point, I was also instrumental in furthering the policy of selling to adjoiners. However, I think with our new redevelopment team, that they should have an opportunity that if they want to bring forward a vision, let's say, to develop a certain kind of area with properties that we're selling, that they should advocate for that. So it shouldn't just be random sales. I mean, we have one policy, and it served us well to sell to adjoiners. But now, in this redevelopment phase, it may be advantageous, when they bring it back, to propose, whether it's a district, just like we did with 4th Street, or it's some residential area, whatever it is, I think they should be mindful and have the opportunity to kind of seek a vision and be able to implement the vision by restricting property. So I'm just giving them that kind of shout-out to remind them that I think it's within their purview to recommend something like that.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
I said aye. I don't know if she.
It's coming. Hold on. All those opposed?
Sorry, who was the second or? Oh, thank you.
So I have a motion from Vice Mayor Reese, a second from Councilwoman Taylor. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Sorry for that. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we would like to take.
Nice to see you. We never get to see you anymore.
Madam Mayor, we do have to take a separate motion on item L51. So if we can take a motion on that.
By the way, great job, Mr. McArdle.
Thank you.
I'm prepared on L51 to make the motion.
Go right ahead.
I'll move to approve staff recommendations.
Okay, hold on one second. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on this item?
Sorry.
Okay, Vice Mayor has made a motion, and I believe a second from Councilwoman Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Okay.
Councilmember Ebert, did you put your vote in? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Sending it back to you, Madam Clerk.
Let's go ahead and close out redevelopment agency boards. We're moving on to item L6, which are redevelopment agency board comments announcements regarding boards and commissions.
All right. Any comments? Seeing there are none, we are going to move on.
Thank you. Item L7 is closing public comment for the redevelopment agency board, to which I have none, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn RDA.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor from Vice Mayor, a second from Councilwoman Martinez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. We are on item E1, E is in Edward 1, which is an ordinance introduction to be read by the City Attorney's Office.
All right. I'm going to send it over to Carl Hall. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance introduction, bill number 7228, ordinance amending the Reno Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 2.08 to modify the frequency and number of required meetings of the Financial Advisory Board.
Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
We have none registered.
Councilwoman Breckus, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, let's get a little explanation on why we're doing this. I mean, finances are important. Talking about finances is important. Why don't we want to talk about finances more? All right.
Madam Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone jumping up from staff, but I'll just tell you because I am the liaison to the Financial Advisory Board, that the Financial Advisory Board members have really requested this change in really two ways. One is because they have had some issues over time with the quorum, and two was about the question of whether they have to meet every month, and I don't think they believe they need to meet every month. They believe they can meet sort of as needed, and as Ms. Van Buren makes her way to the dais, I think she can confirm that it's just a matter of sort of harmonizing. Some of the boards have very exacting requirements about how often and frequently they must meet. Other of our boards have less rules, so it's sort of a harmonizing of the rules and also an acknowledgement to the Financial Advisory Board members about their desire to be a bit more flexible with their calendar.
Sure. Would you like me to address it a little bit?
Yeah.
Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, this is a request that the Financial Advisory Board had requested that staff bring forward. They took a vote in a motion to bring this forward to council. The actual meetings are set by ordinance for the Financial Advisory Board, and it currently states that the meeting that the board must meet monthly. And so there are times when council is not meeting or taking a break, such as in June and July, where we don't have some items that are current for the board, but they still have to meet. So we're not allowed to cancel a meeting just because we don't have any items for the board. We still have to go ahead and meet. And there are times when we know we won't have a quorum around the holidays and such, but we still have to meet. And so the request from the board is just not that they wouldn't intend to meet monthly, but they would have the flexibility to cancel a meeting here and there if needed. The way this is written for what's presented to you today is they would meet a minimum of nine times a year. That doesn't mean they couldn't meet 12 times a year. It just means that they would have a small amount of flexibility.
Okay.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, we don't open up ordinances a lot, and we've never opened up this one in the 10 years I've been on, but, you know, section 2.08474 related to the board says, "Review of Board Performance." The performance of the board shall be evaluated by the City Council a minimum of once every three years. The council shall conduct such a performance evaluation between January and March for the purposes of determining the need for the continued existence of the board in accordance with the final following. And there's five things, you know, objectives, board is needed and used, board operates, and so on. So, you know, rather than tinker with this tiny thing, which calls into question all the other things that the council should be evaluating every three years and hasn't, let's go through that process. We don't have an audit committee. The county over there, they have a subcommittee of the commission that serves as the audit committee. I always understood this was a substitute for the audit committee, and I'd like to see them have more robust roles or be a hybrid subcommittee of the council because I don't, and I served as the liaison, I see need for a more stronger role in this area, but I want to even take a step back off of that. We had two comments today from people from the Civil Service Commission or Senior Citizen Commission. They don't like the way those boards are operating either. I've been raising consistently questions about the NAPS. We need to do a full-scale analysis of our boards and commissions, how they're doing, how they're not, and not tinker on the edges with things like how often they meet, particularly when we're negligent in administering the ordinance here. So I object to this strongly. I think this is very, is not well-conceived, and we want to tackle the finance board, tee it up as being compliant with 2.0474. I don't like being non-compliant with something we're supposed to do every three years.
All right. Councilwoman Breckus, first of all, again, I think we tend to get off-topic. This really was something about they don't feel that it's necessary to continue to meet as frequently. Some boards do, some boards don't. I think, you know, it just all sort of depends. I think that's a different discussion of bringing back on the agenda of looking at some of those other boards. I think, you know, you make a good point there. Some are working well, some don't work so well. I think there's, you know, some work to be done there, so I want to leave that separately to this issue at hand, and then we could put it on the agenda to talk about that because there are some things I'd like to bring up with some of the other boards and commissions, for sure, because some don't even meet, right? Like the stadium board and some of that stuff. So I think there is some validity there and some cleanup. So, thank you, Councilwoman Breckus. Did you give me a motion? Sorry, Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move to refer for the second reading and adoption on the recommendation of staff.
All right. So, Madam Clerk, I have a motion now, and I would like a second, I think, from Councilwoman Taylor? Discussion, Councilwoman Breckus?
Yeah. I mean, this is a body that has not gone into strategic workshops to set up priority for what gets tackled since 2019. We have, how many new members? Three. We have a new city manager. And, you know, priorities seem to be all over the place. You know, do... And let me just, let me just continue. So that's objection number one. Objection number two is, I was stunned when I opened up the Financial Advisory Board ordinance and saw that every three years, between the months of January and March, we should be evaluating them. I don't, to five factors. I don't like being one of the senior board members and not having followed an ordinance, and I think it absolutely is on topic. So I would take a punt on this and bring back the entire Financial Advisory Board ordinance and do this evaluation like we're supposed to do. I can't believe, and it's not off-topic. It's not off-topic. We are not following an ordinance that some of our predecessors put in place with respect to this very critical function, and it, you know, that's what we need to be doing and focusing on. So I'm not going to support. Thank you.
Okay. That's fine. Totally fine. I don't think we are all over the place, and I also think we need to take in account that we've been through a lot of crisis, certainly in a pandemic, and other ways in which we had to shift. So I don't, I don't agree with that, and I think it's really easy to criticize and criticize, and I think our team has done a tremendous job. All of you guys have worked really hard, so I want to say thank you instead of maybe feeling criticized all the time. That's, you know, not the intent up here, certainly not how many of us feel. So, thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'll also add to your sentiment that the Ward 1 member has been on the body for 10 years, ergo violating some obscure statute for the last 10 years. And I just do not like the use of minutia in government to spring forth when it's convenient. I think if there is some issue where we have, you know, not observed the letter of the law with regard to municipal governance, we'll fix that. And certainly when they call attention to it, either through an audit function or through the review of a municipal ordinance, it's like, you're right, we haven't observed this every three-year thing about whatever subsection A of subsection B of little I says. We'll fix that. I don't think that is anything that we can't handle or that we have not tried to live up to the best aspirational goals of the organization. So I thank the Ward 1 member for calling our attention to this obscure, minute element of the municipal code section. There's probably thousands of those. I think it used to be in like 1800 that if you spit on the sidewalk, that was a, you know, a felony charge, and, you know, women couldn't wear hats on Mondays. You know, laws happen that we are a bit obscure and can be outdated. There's some, I think, funny articles on the internet where you can look at laws that are on the books in various communities that aren't observed. Doesn't mean someone is all of a sudden then, you know, committing a felony or a treasonous act against the country. It just means that some laws are old and obscure, and sometimes they get lost in the shuffle. If this one is worth looking at, I'm sure Ms. Van Buren will be in a position to tell us about that. But for my point, the Financial Advisory Board are made of incredibly talented and thoughtful people who give of their time willingly. They are the ones who initiated this request, and I'm happy to support them in that effort.
All right. Councilwoman Doer, were you trying to... She wasn't, right? Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Madam Clerk?
We're moving on to ordinance adoptions. Item F1 to be read by the City Attorney's Office. Additionally, Madam Mayor, do you have a public commenter in the audience on this item?
On this item? Okay. Perfect. I'm going to send it right back to you for a public comment. Go ahead.
Okay. Our first commenter today is Tracy Overholt.
Good afternoon. My name is Tracy Overholt. I live on West Golden Valley Drive, and the recent development houses out there have personally impacted my family's quality of life. And the project that you guys are discussed, discussing down on Gold, West Golden Valley and North Virginia, the Golden Valley Commerce Center, that's just going to add to the problems we are already having out there. Trying to get around, traffic is terrible, and I know it's going in right behind or right in front of housing development that's down below me, and I know they're like, say, like 210 feet from the railroad to the opposite side of the railroad. My house is 810 feet from Chewy, and it is lit up like the Fourth of July that night, and I just don't want to see this happening to other residents out there. It's horrible. It's impacted our sleeping, our, just everything. I do have pictures, and this has been a couple of years, contacting Chewy and the City Board, not you specifically, but regarding the impact on our lives, and nobody's listening to us out there. Nobody. I have pictures as to what they promised would not happen, and it did happen regarding the lighting, the traffic, the noise, and it's not being addressed for us. And that is going to impact us even more with the traffic and the families that live there.
Have there, maybe City Manager, maybe you can kind of bring us up to speed, have there been discussions with Chewy, and I'm assuming we had something in place, and are they following it? What's...
We do have conditions of operation in place, and I know that we are presently monitoring them, and they are in the process of, through the code enforcement folks, we have people monitoring, and I know that they either have or are contracting with sound engineers to make sure that we're meeting the standard that is in place right now. So I know that there's an active, there's an active effort out there with code enforcement to make sure that they're complying with the standards of operation that are appended to their license.
Have they had code violations?
They have.
They have?
Yes.
Okay. That's problematic.
And it's still happening.
Okay. That, thank you for bringing that up to us.
You're welcome.
That's really important to know.
So the traffic is another big one, like I said. It needs to be addressed before the problem gets worse out there.
Yeah.
It's like a truck last month broke down right there by Golden Gate at that intersection, North Valleys, or not, sorry, not North of the Valleys, North Virginia and West Golden Valley. We had nowhere to go. We were stuck in that traffic for 45 minutes. They've got a median on one side of it. You can't go over it. You can't go around it, and that's where that truck was stopped.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Is that RTC? Is RTC? And that? Can you get me a memo?
Yep.
I'm going to have City Manager get me a memo. I'm going to follow up.
Okay.
We will follow up with you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay.
All right. Madam Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment, and I have not received any correspondence, so we can have the City Attorney read the ordinance if you are prepared for that.
Okay. Go right ahead.
This is ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6444, case number LDC 23-00022. Golden Valley Commerce Center zoning map amendment, request for a zoning map amendment for mixed-use suburban MS zoning district to the industrial-commercial ICE zoning district. The plus-or-minus 6.08 acre site is located on the southeast side of West Golden Valley Road, approximately plus-or-minus 298 feet southwest of its intersection with North Street. Subject site has a master plan, land use designation of industrial I work for.
Okay. All right. Any questions from council? Councilman?
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right. Go ahead.
I move to, or I'm sorry, let me give staff the opportunity to catch up.
Madam Clerk, we're prepared for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt.
All right. I have a motion to adopt. I have a second from Councilwoman Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I'll have a little comment on this.
Okay.
I think it's relevant because we have public comment. We don't usually get public comment on adoptions, but I'm emphatically voting no for this zoning district that has this mild permutation, the very targeted permutation, other than the one that I think would have been suitable for the area of allowing 24-hour operation. So once again, 24-hour operation logistics warehouses are going to be allowed to the detriment of the quality of life of Ward 4 residents, and so I vote no. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Councilwoman Breckus. I do. Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Opposed.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to item F2, an ordinance adoption to be read by the City Attorney's Office.
This is ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6445. Case number LDC 23-00023, 455 Crampton Street. Master plan and zoning map amendments. Request for a zoning map amendment for plus or minus 0.16 acre site for multifamily residential, 14 units per acre. Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan MF14 WAMP to general commercial, Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan GC WAMP. The site is located north of Crampton Street, plus or minus 170 feet east of its intersection with Wells Avenue, Ward 3.
All right. Thank you. Any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, we have none registered.
Okay, thank you so much. I believe, is this you, Mr. Martinez?
Yes, it is, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move to adopt the ordinance.
All right. So Madam Clerk, I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Martinez, a second by Vice Mayor Reese. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, item F3, an ordinance adoption to be read by the City Attorney's Office.
Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6446. Ordinance amending Reno Municipal Code Title 12, entitled Public Works and Utilities, Chapter 12.16, Sewer Service, Section 12.16.290. Rolling unit, residential unit in Section 12.16.300, industrial-commercial connection fee to revise the connection fee rates for both residential and industrial-commercial to establish fees by service area and to provide for an annual fee increase for the Consumer Price Index, all urban consumers, CPI-U, for the west urban area, together with matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected there too.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I've dropped. All right, so I have a-
Madam Mayor, for the record, I just need to state that we did receive one comment, which was associated. It was one letter in opposition that has been distributed to the Reno City Council and is a part of the record.
Okay, thank you so much. So I have a motion to adopt. Yes, go ahead, oh, hold on. I have a motion to adopt by Councilwoman Breckus. Do you have a second? If I, Vice Mayor? I'm going to send it for discussion. Go ahead, Councilwoman Taylor.
I have that question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Taylor, and then Councilwoman Dour. I'll get to you in a second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm wondering if there is any opportunity to push the effective date out a couple of months to have some discussion with stakeholders. John, would, maybe in April? Is that something that you would entertain?
For the record, John Flansburgh, Regional Infrastructure Administrator. So the way that this is going to be enacted, it's going to be on future building, as building permits come in. So building permits that are already actively in place are there now. So I don't know that I'd recommend that we would push this out. I think the effective date is-
When's the effective date?
So the effective date going to effect will be Monday at 12:01 a.m. for all new permit applications.
So I'm wondering if, if the, like I said, if there is discussion maybe by the council of we have a little bit more comfort based on what we heard today of moving that to April for adoption, and if that is possible or implementation.
The other thing, I'm just curious, have they had like a 30-day notice already? Like, hey, reminder, this is coming to this point?
Yes.
So you've already sent out notices?
The building enterprise, I mean, the building or business impact statement process, the workshop in November that we had, the follow-up meeting that we had with the builders in December, our discussion at the last council meeting. So those have all been in place.
Mm-hmm, and that was clear in 30 days on this date? You have always said a specific date this will go into effect.
I'm not certain that we've said, you know, necessarily it will be effective this date. We, you know, prescribed it through this process. I don't think we can push out adoption until April because we end up outside the 45 days between first and second. What I hear you asking is, can we push the effective date of an adopted ordinance out so that we have time to clean up the code provisions that we were talking about earlier today in the presentation that Mr. Flansburgh made with respect to how do we make calculations on fixture units? How do we collect these fees, whether it's at COO or at time of permit? And if that's your question, I do think that's something we can accomplish, but I defer to-
That was the question that I was asking, but I wanted to give my colleagues some time to weigh in. I don't want to hold this up by any means. And I'd like to make sure that we adopt it today.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, this has been so long time going. I mean, on rates that were set since 2014. I've been talking about this since 2016, okay? So I know it seems, you know, if you haven't been here a long time, that, wow, this is not giving a lot of notice, but a lot of notice has been given. And when you're at adoption, to hold stakeholder meetings at adoption, that's not a best practice. Mr. Flansburgh's been out there for two summers, you know, having these meetings. And I understood our earlier discussion was that we're going to bring back, we're going to adopt today and bring back some other cleanup that is more inherent to how we calculate things. So, you know, that I supported. But I don't support coming into an adoption of a longtime ordinance that's been a priority of this council. Mr. Flansburgh recommend, reminded us of a 2020 special workshop we had. We all sat down here and had a long workshop. So this is a time going. I'm ready to move and get the vote going. Thank you.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have that, Madam Clerk? Okay. All right, sending it right back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to move on to item G1, which is City Council Comments. Oh, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. This is, I guess it's been a long day for me already. This is the appointment to the Truckee River Flood Management Authority Board of Directors. Council, we did receive notification from Vice Mayor Reese that he needed to resign from that board as the member due to some scheduling conflicts. And thus, this position is now open. Depending on who we appoint to this position, there could be a subsequent vacancy in the alternate position. So technically, we're looking to appoint one member, but if in that event we have an alternate open as well, we would be looking for two appointments today.
Okay, go ahead, give me a-
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be honored to ask Councilmember Martinez to fill the role as the member on the body, and then, I think, as the alternate, Ms. Taylor.
Okay, so I have a motion-
And I'd like to second that.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Reese, a second from Councilwoman Dour. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Hold on, we're waiting for it to come up.
I just did it.
Yep, okay.
I'm not in opposition, but I didn't push anything.
I just did it because they were rolling through it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Sending it right back to you, Madam Clerk, item-
Thank you. We're moving on to item H1, which is now City Council Comments for Boards and Commissions.
Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor.